It's nine thirty. I'll call the meeting to order for a standing committee of the whole for Tuesday, March eleventh. Tense at the beginning of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Jolly and Vermont's key virtual. Council Mackay, would you like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sure that the March eleventh twenty twenty five agenda be adopted as presented.
All those in favor? Is unanimous?
Button your question with me.
You can invent that.
I just invented it.
Okay. Um, we have one registered speaker for appointments speaking to the community amenities update. And that's trustee Rose. So trustee Rose, any one of those two tables says presenter? And Natalie and Shelley, we got a package from the school board. Did you give two more? Okay. Some information. Oh, we'll get this to you guys, but I'm sure you're gonna go through this in your presentation. Go ahead whenever you're ready. I have five minutes.
All right. Thank you. Cheryl's just gonna bring up our presentation there today. A lot of this you've seen before, but we'd like to thank you for hearing our presentation last week and for responding with a council motion to our request to change the Sherro community amenities school site from high school to school. This isn't, this is important as we move through our next steps towards multimillion dollar educational infrastructure investments in our community, and we're excited to continue working and hopefully celebrating with you. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss this in a little further detail and answer some questions today. Uh, I just had to share this plaque appears in our Kinisheo Elementary School that opened in nineteen eighty-three, so forty, over forty years ago. And I was really quite taken by the quote from then Education Minister David King that reminds us of the importance of this work and that our children are our future and we are the stewards of their trust. Get you to do the next slide please. Thank you. So this slide has, um, as it appears in both the West Area Structure Plan as well as the Sherro Neighborhood Plan, where the site that we're talking about is situated. And Cheryl, if you could move to the next slide, please. Thank you. And then in the appendix that is also in your agenda package today, this is the site as it appears in that appendix. Yes, thanks, Cheryl. Uh, and then this is, as we would have presented to you last spring, our three-year capital plan. And with the construction of the Bellrose Modernization and Expansion, uh, we then elevated the K to nine in the Northwest. Ideally in, on that community amenities school site. Because it was really has been our pri- our next priority behind the high school solutions that came in, in three phases. And so that's been in the works for the last decade, at least, as we've seen our city grow. Thank you. We recognize that the public consultation that was done early in two thousand twenty-three ranked a high school as the third highest priority amenity for the community amenities site. There were also concerns identified with integrating the high school on the site, namely with traffic, parking and safety, as well as the proximity to Bellrose. These concerns would largely be mitigated if we put a K to nine on that site instead. So here is, and this is also in the package that you received today. This is the inventory of school sites, both existing and potential uh, in the community, both city-owned and developer-owned. And we've just, our administration has annotated the city's map with just a description of the suitability for our needs. And so sort of pulled out there was the, um, the Sherro site that is forty-five acres. And while it is big enough for a high school, it's just too close to Bellrose to really serve where our needs are arising and but it really would work well for a K to nine as well. So to give you a little bit of an idea of what this could look like, we've taken, this is an aerial view of two of the newest schools in the city. Uh, Joseph M. Demko that is built right now for seven hundred students, but with an expansion potential to nine hundred as a K to nine. It opened in twenty nineteen. And immediately beside it is Sister Althons Academy. Built for four hundred students. And they don't have any ability to expand at all there, and they are full. So this is what we see as some of the opportunities.
Seconds, Kristy.
Okay. So I've listed here some of the opportunities that we see. Uh, the same synergies of having school programming, whether it be a high school or a K to nine exist. Uh, we heard definitely last week that with that newfound space that is realized from having a smaller school on that site. Uh, I think there's all kinds of opportunities in terms of what Parks and Recreation would like to do. And certainly, uh, school programming, academy programs are popular as are our minor sports. Organizations, I think, would be really keen to be able to expand on those amenities as well. And there was, sorry Cheryl, just back on that last slide, on the previous slide. Here's a great example from Sherwood Park that I happened to come across just at the end of February here about, uh, the Archbishop Jordan High School attached to the Emerald Hills site. And, uh, they're having to implement, uh, enhanced security to monitor parking and, uh, some of this, the safety issues around there as well. And I think if you were to.
Okay, I see. I think like it's way over five. So I think what you're here to reiterate is your request to remove upward high from the school site in. So that notice of motion has been given for that already, and we'll debate that in April at some point. Um, I just have a quick question, either one of you. Is there a educational or learning disadvantage to going seven to twelve instead of K to nine? I'm gonna, yeah, yeah, maybe.
Is there an educational?
Yeah, like, like, if that would be an opportunity for this site in Sherro to go seven to twelve, because that way you don't have the little kids from Riverside and everything crossing over Reggiv and, and putting an elementary right in Riverside where there is two sites of Willa Willby or, or even in Sherro down on the south side, this smaller site, which are better for elementary. So I'm just wondering if it's if there's a reason you, oh, you want K to nine instead of seven to twelve to put the bigger school.
Think the, the seven to twelve concept is something we talked about, but again, it sits within a kilometer and a half of Bellrose. Right? So the high school programming that we have, given the additional seats that are now going in and to the addition and modernization of Bellrose, that is, that area will be well-suited, um, and supported through Bellrose. So that's why we went to the K to nine concept, given Riverside, the growth in Riverside and in Sherro, we know that we need a K to nine in that area. Currently, there isn't a site big enough for us to be able to build a K to nine that's shovel-ready, right? And we're reasonably confident we're going to hear an announcement. Um, just given the work the board has done, the government's commitment to, uh, building schools, we're gonna hear about our number one request, which was a K to nine.
And of course, if that happens, then the city will have to figure that out, right? Quickly. Yeah.
So we only, we have such a short time to react.
I guess my question about seven to twelve, it's too late because you've already submitted your priority as K to nine.
I, yeah. It was our number one request to the province. It isn't that we hadn't considered it. I can maybe add to what Crimson's saying as well is much of the driver behind the accelerator program is to allow those traditional capital planning processes to kind of be compressed. And being that we've got a new K to nine, we've got the design already well nailed down. And that is typically what you're seeing the province build is those moving to more of a K to nine model to be able to take advantage of some of those economies of scale.
Okay.
Thanks. Is that still the same cold you had a month ago?
Hmm. Better than size. I keep trying.
Do you need, are you gonna have an excuse for tonight?
No, I'm here tonight. I'll be here tonight. I promise.
Crimson's on our policing committee and, and I feel sorry for, I always get the teacher cold. Um, the Sturgeon Heights, it belongs to Sturgeon School, right? Um, and it sits right on Hogan Road, just by Bill Newt. Do you know approximately what site size is on that one?
So crumb.
Would it be, would it be as?
I think it's.
It's fairly large, right?
Which would?
Sturgeon Heights, it's right on, right across the street, city corner to JJ Nearin. So you, would it, it's, would it, would it be like four hectares size? I mean, is that, I, that might not be a fair question if you don't know.
It's certainly something we can gather some info on.
And I guess a follow-up question is, is, is there any possibility that that'll ever come into your inventory? Or is something you, okay.
Um, so it's something that we have reviewed, right? So that is a historical site from when Saint Albert ended at, um, what is that, uh, Hogan Road, right? So, um, it sits there. So it's something we've talked about. And actually, way back when we did the amalgamation, um, there was some talk about it coming to us, but we didn't want it in place of a new school, right? Because it, it requires a lot of work.
Yeah.
But it is something that is on our radar and something that we understand. It's serving, it's serving our students actually in the area. So it is something that is a conversation that needs to be probably worked out in the next probably five or six years.
So if the number one priority, uh, happens and we get that announcement, uh, whenever, so would the, um, students currently going to Sturgeon Heights that belong in your school system, would they then just move over to Sherro?
Well, and that would be a family decision, right?
Yeah.
Uh, if they're already attending and walking to school to Sturgeon Heights, that's really what's happening, right? Is the community that surrounds Sturgeon Heights is they're just walking to school.
My fridge.
Potentially with a new school, right? Uh, parents do re-look at what's available programming-wise and we, we have lots of great plans for a K to nine in that Sherro area. So
Yeah.
It's a possibility. I can't say for sure.
You know what the school population is, uh, Sturgeon Heights?
And I, we could find that out. I can ask him.
Yeah.
So I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. No, that's fine. I can. Um, I just, would just be curious as to how many students from, uh, our community go to Sturgeon Heights, take the opportunity for the reasons you've identified.
Uh, you feel it's, it's too many?
Yeah.
Quite honestly, um, but it, when it's your community school, right?
Why?
Completely understand. It's a family. You want to be able to walk to and from school.
Right. Fair enough. Thank you.
Council Brother?
I just further to that, uh, I was just looking at the stats, the number of kids coming in are just increasing all the time. And, and I get it that, uh, our students want to go to Sturgeon because it's close. Sterling, Hawk Ridge, uh, how many of those are coming to Saint Albert? To, uh, to get schooling as opposed to being on a bus for forty-five minutes to an hour?
We can get some real stats for you if you like. We do have a program that we monitor, but we feel that, or what we've seen in the past is the number of kids that are coming into Saint Albert, there's an equivalent number of kids who are going out for whatever reason. Um, for instance, Sturgeon Schools Division is picking up students from North, uh, Northridge and taking them out into community school in Sturgeon. We know that there are a number that go into Edmonton for various programming, sports activities, whatever the case may be, right? So we feel that there's a relative give and take on that front of what comes in versus what goes out.
Okay, fair enough. I am, I'm glad that.
We do not.
Case. It's just, just wondering if it's, if it's sort of the growth of Saint Albert that is draw, uh, driving the increase, or if it's growth within the region that's sort of driving.
We don't bus outside the city of Saint Albert. So in fairness, we believe that it is the growth within Saint Albert that's driving our student population predominantly.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you.
See no more questions, ladies. Go, go ahead.
Any idea, I mean, I realize you probably don't know as much as, I mean, and we don't know as much as you guys do. Any idea when there could be a possible announcement as to your, your requests?
Typically, there will be further detailed announcements within the month or so after budget release. We're anticipating with them the next two weeks.
So, Council.
A good. Um, so the motion won't be debated till at least April first, and so you're gonna be getting the announcement. And if it happens to be at the Sherro site, I guess it might be to administration. I'm like, well, we'll wait. I guess, yeah. So there, the other question I had is, um, so if we, if this was changed over and it wasn't K to nine, and I understand that you really want that site in the Northeast, but there's a lot of steps before it's gonna be available for request. So are you prepared to just simply wait until another school site or high school becomes available in order, and then give up the potential for the Sherro because your number one request was a K to nine? Is that the intention?
Well, I mean, we need both, right? We've said this all the way along. We need, um, we need the west, but we also need something in the north. We've heard loud and clear from council that there are significant challenges with the Northeast site. So from our perspective, we have enough room for the next two years. Right? We'll be able to manage our student population, and hopefully within that time, a reasonable solution has come to, to pass, and we're able to start really pushing. What we have to recognize is that the Capital Accelerator Plan is short-lived. So if we would like to be able to get in on that and build in that north sector, then we're gonna have to do that sooner rather than later. So we recognize that there are challenges for council. We're hoping that solutions are coming forward. You guys have lots of big decisions and I, school sites are only one of them, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for questions. I see none online, so we're good. Did you want to ask the administration a quick question about that?
So, um, if they get the request and they get the, get approval on it for a site that we still say high school, is the intention then to put like a special council meeting so we can actually debate this or if it, like, if, I didn't know the numbers would come in or?
Ultimately, it's an ASP amendment, counselor, so, um, I believe your motion actually pulls, is exactly that, would be remove the high school caveat from the ASP is effectively what needs to be done. So we would leave it. Like, I, I don't think, um, a couple of weeks is gonna make a difference from our perspective. I would defer to this.
Really, if it happens in the month, then we'll be the next decision, what we're doing. And one other question. So last week when we had the motion for to fast-track, um, the specific land use bylaw, and obviously there would be like, um, changes to the work plan of, of administration in planning to accommodate that. So I know that there's an urgency to get the Northeast at least brought forward that because LandDrax is in a prepared to give us some land and that they want to transition a site and they'd like it to come before July sixteenth. Is that still a possibility that we can actually have that come before council? Um, by the sixteenth of July, or is that like off the table now?
Specifically for the Northeast.
For the Northeast.
Yeah, so, so it's certainly a possibility, but at the end of the day, the city engineer has to be content that it's a viable solution from an interim perspective.
Not from servicing, just for the area structure plan, because with, like, um, I know that when uh, Ray Watkins came last week, he was like, we really were hoping that this will come before July sixteen, but I do know that now.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're, you're talking about the redistricting, the rezoning.
Yeah, the rezoning. And now we've had that, um, fast tracking. So now we have, uh, I don't know how your, your, your work plan has unfolded now. And do we still think that's a possibility?
I would. It's Peter.
Okay. Sure.
You thought.
One of two, Mike, Christina.
You're the next contestant.
It says Anne, but you could sit there. It's fine.
You know who you are.
Pretty good.
Um, the, because it's applicant-driven, um, it is in a process. We're looking at what they've provided for information. Um, again, based upon if it is complete, I don't have these exact details right now, so I apologize if it is complete. Um, the timing is that it could, um, arrive somewhere mid-July. Um, or the first one in August. So this is where we're looking at it. I might, I don't want to over commit, but that's where it should land.
So if I hear you correctly, what you're saying is that the LandDrax, um, ASP was, is now looking for September because we don't meet in August, so.
We can always call a special meeting.
Yeah, but would we call a special meeting for it? Or, but like, it, assuming we don't call a special meeting, it would be a September decision is what you're looking at. I'm not committing you to anything. I'm saying where you leave.
Right now, I think if it's complete, it should land in July.
Okay.
But I don't know if it's complete or not. I'm not the file planner on it. So
Yeah.
Um, if not, it would go to whichever the next council meeting would be.
Which would be September as it's currently scheduled.
So the intention is, assuming that it is complete, that we're still aiming for July sixteen?
Yeah, like it would, because it lands in our processes. Our processes would put it into July.
I wasn't sure just because of your need to reprioritize from the last meeting, that's.
Yeah, so that is part of the challenge that we're dealing with and, and it depends on how many more applications in, but that one is in the queue. Um, as long as it's complete. If it's not complete, it pushes it back. And that is up to the applicant to address.
Thank you.
But, so I had make, um, the Sherro school site, assuming that it might get approved this year, would take some significant servicing, uh, Road two sixty is dirt road right now, um, and access into that site, assuming that that school grows ahead prior to, uh, the rent facility. Do we know what a standalone cost estimate is? Has anybody looked at that? To, to actually do the road development that would be required to, to service that school site?
Um, maybe hand, and then we've also got, um, amenities here as well, so.
Range Road two sixty is an all-weather surface. So from that perspective, it does not need to be improved at all. Um, access onto the site is another matter, and then that will probably be related to the site planning of the community amenities. Um, if you recall, I think the idea was the high school site was supposed to be adjacent to the road, adjacent to Range Road two sixty. So then you're talking about just having the most lay-by into the site. And so I'm, there's costs for sure. Those costs are unknown at this point in time.
Say all-weather, what, what's that? It's not paved, right?
Doesn't have to be paved. It has to be accessible all year round, all-weather access. So there's no need to improve Range Road two sixty for any school site at this point in time. That's something that happens down the road. It does not need to happen right now.
Oh, down the road, no pun intended.
That's, that's good clarification.
It's suddenly legal like this.
Look, access, yes.
Yeah, there's no difference. I, I just wouldn't have imagined that we would have been driving school buses down on a, on a daily basis.
You can do it today.
Oh, yeah, you can do it. I, I don't dispute that either. Absolutely. I don't dispute that. I just.
I thought you wanted to go both ways.
The counties are dealing with both times.
Okay, a surprise. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ladies. Um, I need someone to make a motion to approve the minutes from the February eleventh Standing Committee of the Whole.
I can.
Go ahead, Council Use.
Uh, that is Standing Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February eleventh twenty twenty-five, the adoptees presented.
Perfect. All those in favor? So that's unanimous. Excuse me. All right, let's talk about the community amenities site. So I've got Craig Cameron.
Here, yeah, Danielle, Craig.
And. And Danielle.
Perhaps, Mary, if you're okay, I could turn it over to Alex, which is major to your parts.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, good morning, everyone. Um, just here to kind of provide a report on the update of the current phase of work for the community amenities, uh, which includes some information on site studies, uh, functional study as well as a partnership overview. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, when city acquired the lands in Saint Albert's Northwest, the Downhill Community Amenities Site, uh, administration conducted, uh, a needs assessment that led to providing a conceptual design that was affirmed by council in, uh, two thousand twenty-three. And the team here, uh, led by, uh, Mr. Cameron and, uh, but not, will be presenting us an update related to this.
Thanks, Alex. So good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm Danielle Pudubny, Director of Recreation and Parks, and I'm here with Craig Cameron, our, uh, manager of Parks and Community Partnerships, and Mike Roma, who's our consultant from RSG Strategies, um, to give an overview today of where we are currently at with the community amenities project. Um, we've been, as, um, Alex has shared with you, we've been involved with, um, site studies, operating and partnership work, and a potential pathway for implementation now of the project. Um, today, we're gonna give you a bit of an overview of that, of that project and where it's at, and we'll have a question time at the end, so we can ask you to hold your questions at this point through the presentation. That would be great. And we also have staff on, as this is a really cross-departmental collaborative project from, um, we have Donnie, uh, George, Meredith Willacy, Dean Schick from Engineering, and Victor from Finance, and Christina Peter from Planning, um, available as well for any questions on the project as we proceed through. So just to give a quick overview, that this project is a legacy project for the city of Saint Albert, and it's one of the council's strategic priorities. We've been working diligently, um, on this project since two thousand eighteen with oversight and attention that it requires an integrated approach for council approval and council decisions throughout. So just as a reminder, in two thousand eighteen, we did an expression of interest on the lands, and in two thousand twenty-two is Row Hit that was selected, um, the Row Hit lands that were selected for the project. Um, in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-three, we signed that agreement, and in two thousand twenty-two, we, uh, also affirmed our recreation needs assessment with council. In two thousand twenty-three, we completed the community amenities concept plan, which again was endorsed by council, and we've been working on this portion of the project from twenty-three and twenty-four. So with that in turn, just to give you that bit of reflection on the history of the project, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Cameron, and he's gonna walk you through the work stage.
Great. Uh, thank you. As Mr. Dumbly said, uh, we'll give you a little bit of background on the project, uh, give you some updates on the work that we've been, uh, completing in this phase. Uh, and I think the big thing is our implementation pathways, so next steps in the project. And in two thousand twenty-two, the council signed a land deal with Row Hit Group of Companies for fifty-six acre site in the city's northwest corner between Reggiv and Drive and Range Road two sixty. The site contains a former landfill shown, uh, here and is a green blob on the map. Twenty-six acres are developable land, and thirty acres of this land are suitable for passive outdoor recreation. Uh, that's the portion that has the, uh, the former landfill. Uh, of that land there, the, uh, the developable lands currently sit under city title. The, the remaining lands there, the, the passive lands are still with Row Hit, subject to terms of land agreement. Uh, they're completing capping work, we believe, this year, uh, and they have a two-year environmental monitoring period. Uh, after that's completed, uh, the land will transfer process will begin, so we're anticipating the land will be under city title in two thousand twenty-seven. Also in, in two thousand twenty-two, uh, administration completed a community needs assessment, uh, resulting in a ranking of several outdoor and indoor amenities, uh, from high to low. The assessment considered current recreation programming, alignment with council priorities and standards of service, as well as community feedback. The community feedback for this project was, uh, in our opinion, quite substantial. We had nearly nineteen hundred residents, uh, that engaged in that, um, uh, feedback session, as well as several different groups, uh, organizations, schools as well, and indigenous communities feedback. About the assessment, aquatic spaces, both the leisure and competitive, uh, aquatic spaces were identified as the highest priorities for Saint Albert. In two thousand twenty-three, administration went back to community to gather input on plans for the community amenities site. Again, uh, we had, uh, great feedback from the community and community groups. Uh, the result of that process, uh, was in a council-endorris concept plan, which is the one shown on the screen here. The concept plan reflects a variety of indoor and outdoor community amenity needs. The indoor amenities included the aquatic spaces, indoor gym and fitness areas, as well as a single sheet of ice and other community crush spaces. Outdoor spaces include a bike skills park, walking trails, courts, sport fields, and community gathering areas. Also in this site is identified a potential high school, uh, it's intentionally placed to allow for independent project development, uh, parking efficiencies. So we were looking at that space to provide parking needs that meet the community amenities facilities as well. Uh, and we see opportunities for reciprocal use between, uh, school site there and then the surrounding amenities. Uh, and we see opportunities for reciprocal use between, uh, school site there and then the surrounding amenities. Uh, throughout this engagement as well, citizens told us that they preferred to build the site all at once. Uh, tax increases were deemed accessible for advancing the project. And the city should also consider alternative operating models and grants that could reduce the overall cost to build and operate the indoor facilities in particular. Uh, and that really takes us to, uh, the bulk of the, 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 here in the, in the next phase. So during the, the current phase of work, we completed a number of site studies, uh, we completed a functional study and a partnership overview, and I'll be going through the, uh, the highlights of those here. So the first section we'll look at here is our, uh, technical site studies. So we completed a number of technical site studies required to advance design and understand essentially the, the lay of the land there. Through these studies, we identified some drainage, crosslot drainage issues that could be addressed, uh, through future review. Uh, most importantly though, uh, nothing was uncovered during these preliminary investigations that indicated any major site issues concerns, uh, in proceeding with the project. The outside the scope of the community amenities site, uh, the following projects we identified for ongoing coordination to ensure this, to ensure design integration, construction efficiencies and financial prioritization. A functional study was also completed during this phase of work and really the functional study helps us to understand kind of our overall operating environment. So market conditions, including impacts to existing service deliveries, uh, cost to operate, as well as our return on investment. When we think of return on investment here, it's important to, to remember that we didn't, uh, start down this path, uh, motivated by necessarily by economic returns on our community investments here, but it's really about understanding anticipated social value back to the community. In alignment with municipal development plan, the community amenities site enables optimal use of municipal reserve lands for the benefit of city and residents. Helps to ensure all residents have convenient access to park systems that is safe, connected and responsive to the needs of the community, and supports social connectivity and personal well-being through community facilities, gathering spaces that result, respond to community needs. Uh, details of the functional study are important to future operating decisions, including seeking and evaluating partnerships. Uh, however, given the current phase of the amenity site, uh, project details of this work remain confidential. Uh, and this is really, if we do go down the, the path of partnership, uh, it's important that we have, uh, I guess, maintain a competitive, uh, opportunity should we be looking at different partnerships there. Uh, that said, we do, we can share today that, uh, we're projecting the cost recovery for the new facility is projected between seventy percent to fifty percent. Uh, that number falls kind of within the existing range of, of current facilities within, uh, in St. Albert here. Those projections are, are based on the amenity composition and sizing, uh, existing fees and charges, current and projected program demands, as well as operating budget assumptions for, uh, similar amenities here at St. Albert's. Uh, and finally here, uh, we consider the community values, uh, for this project related to the access to, to the community recreation amenities. So when the facility opens, we also anticipate short, short-term negative impacts to cost recovery at Service Place and Fountain Park Recreation Centers. A cost recovery for these facilities is anticipated to improve as the population of St. Albert's surrounding areas continues to grow, and patrons establish new patterns of amenity provision. Uh, similar to capture projections, the operating projections, uh, that we've, uh, come to today will be further refined as the project progresses, uh, and will be a critical component of, of, again, future considerations around operations and those partnership opportunities. So that work will be, uh, started as part of this phase will be ongoing as, as, uh, the work progresses. Uh, the next piece of, of study that we did was a, a partnership opportunity review. We recognize that St. Albert already works in partnerships to provide recreation programs and amenities to residents. Uh, so for example, we have nominal leases with a number of organizations at Real Park, uh, which they then leverage to provide both facilities and services back to the community. Uh, prior to this phase of work, Recreation Parks also revised its partnership framework, which outlines our values, process and expectations for partnership development on entering and evaluation. And then building on this framework, uh, we went out and interviewed, uh, large and mid-sized municipalities in, in Alberta that have partnership-operated facilities, speaking both with the municipality, uh, and the partners that operate those as well. In that work, we focused on three different questions. So why do municipalities partner? Who partners with municipalities on developing recreation? Uh, and then why, uh, what types of partnerships exist within municipalities? From that, we determined there are five, uh, different reasons, primary reasons, I guess, that municipalities will, will partner or seek partnership. Uh, there's a strong history of partnership or council direction, uh, for, for partnered, uh, service delivery. They're seeking alternative ways to decrease capital or operating costs. There's a lack of administrative capacity or experience, uh, to operate, uh, the kind of amenities that will be brought into the community. Uh, maybe there's a need for a neutral third-party operator, and this is often the case of kind of inter-municipal or joint ventures on, on, uh, recreation delivery. And there may be a, a motivation or requirement through, uh, legislation. Uh, next we looked at, uh, who kind of partners with municipalities. So we, we've identified three different kinds of organizations that typically partner with municipalities. We have private non-for-profit organizations. Uh, we have inter-municipal partnerships, so usually other municipalities, uh, and then school divisions. In the interest of time, uh, I'll direct, uh, our attention to the, to the agenda package that have the details here. But it's, it's important to note, I guess, that depending on the type of partner that exists, uh, they do have different needs that they're trying to, they're trying to meet through partnerships, as well as different conditions, uh, that make, um, partnering with those different kinds of organizations may be, uh, more feasible. From St. Albert's perspective, uh, we do believe that at least at this time, and the case would have to be proven, but any, uh, of those partnership types identified here could be viable, uh, for this project within St. Albert. Regardless of who we partnership with, uh, partnerships formed to address either facility, uh, capital or facility operations or combination of the two. So that's why we get into the, the partnership, uh, arrangements there. Generally, these partnerships offer different opportunities for direct and indirect cost savings. They also come with challenges and potential constraints in meeting partner needs, ensuring community service expectations, and managing, uh, partnership accountabilities. In foreshadowing, uh, what's going to come in terms of our, our project pathways there, I'd like to point out the timing of partnership discussions, uh, depending on whether, again, it's the capital, the, the operating or a combination of the two. When we start to have, they're considered, uh, those partnerships really aligns with where we're at in our capital process. Again, we feel at this point in time, it's too early to make those, those decisions. Uh, but we'll show you in a second here, kind of when they pop up, uh, typically in, in the project pathway. So through the partnership opportunity review, again, we identified, uh, that, uh, it is a little bit early to, to start that partnership work. There is some work that needs to be done before we, we get to that phase. Uh, first and foremost, we think that the design needs to be advanced for the entire site. So we can understand kind of the integration of the elements and we have a better sense of what, uh, both the facilities and the outdoor amenities will look like. Uh, from a partnership perspective, we need to understand, identify work with council to identify clear priorities and spec, expectations regarding the benefits, outcomes and impacts of a partnership. Uh, again, if we're going to evaluate that, we kind of need to know what we're getting into before we start that process. Uh, and then finally, again, takeaways from the partnership overview is understanding that our desire to have a partnership, uh, doesn't necessarily guarantee that we'll be able to, you know, that, that the partner will be there and willing and able, uh, to deliver on, on what we hope to get out of that partnership as well. So as we look through the, to the process, uh, implementation pathway, we've kind of built that into the process. Uh, and again, the desire to have the partner doesn't guarantee that, uh, that will be the, the way that we move forward on the project. All right. So I'd like to just close out the presentation today by talking about that implementation pathway. Uh, we continue along with a gated approach to advancing the work on the community amenities site. This approach allows council the flexibility to, to consider how best to invest, invest in their priority while balancing other community needs. Based on the neck, on the pathway, the next step for administration would be to, to return to council as part of the twenty twenty-six budget deliberation with options to advance design work. Uh, advancing this design work, uh, for the entire site, again, as I said, is necessary to inform future decisions related to project phasing, phasing rather, as well as exploring, uh, the partnership opportunities and finally, uh, construction on the project. Coming for this work, uh, aligns with anticipation of, uh, the city, uh, having full title of the land. And so, uh, if we're to invest in, uh, design work in part of the twenty twenty-six budget, the period would take us to complete that work essentially would line up with when, uh, the full site, uh, anticipate to be city-owned, uh, which means at that point we could probably start construction. Uh, again, we don't have, uh, we didn't project when, when the capital would happen. Uh, but if we moved along, uh, without delays, uh, we anticipate the earliest the site would be open would still be, uh, into twenty thirty for the project. And that's just based on, um, I'll say typical capital, uh, timelines for, uh, for building out a project of this magnitude. Uh, with that, I will, uh, conclude the presentation and open up questions.
Awesome. Uh, I'll have a, a couple to start us off. I totally agree with designing the whole site, the detailed design. Do you have a price tag for that detailed design?
Uh, anticipate full detailed design to be about ten percent of capital budget. We've done some, some minimal, uh, I guess, corrections, uh, because it was twenty twenty-three. Yeah, uh, when we had initial costing, so around ten million dollar mark.
Do the detailed design.
Detailed design, and that would be for a full detailed design. So take us from where we are today in concept right through to, uh, near construction-ready, uh, plans. There is opportunities that we can discuss. That's part of what we come back at twenty-six. So there's opportunities to, to phase that design as well. So bring it to a schematic design phase before we go to, uh.
It's good. It's, I was tossing around the idea of using some of that surplus money to advance detailed design, but I think it can make maybe two million.
And so Mr. Cameron's point, we can break that out in a couple of different ways. When we bring back capital charters, we'll have some options for council in terms of how that could be funded. Um, and there was some, also some comments from our engineering team on what might be preferred. So we just need to kind of continue to vet that through them um, in terms of the right process to, to advise you to work through.
Because you could do the full detailed design, but then construct in phases, correct?
What we, we take a look. So I think what we'd like to, what we're proposing is that we move at least to a schematic design phase. Uh, so we understand again better site integrations, uh, both with all the amenities on the site as well as facility. At that point, we could come back and have a conversation around, uh, construction phasing. Depending on direction around construction phasing, that would then change, uh, what parts of that project we would then take forward through to, uh, final detailed design.
So the schematic design is obviously less expensive than the full detailed. So do you have an idea what that might be?
Sorry, so, okay, thirty percent of that?
It's about thirty, sorry.
And we even work with our engineering teams to affirm that that's kind of, um, the solid approach that we would take municipally as well, because we make some assumptions on all those design phases corporately. So we would align that to them as well.
When we talk partnerships, and I, I don't know if we can, are, are you in conversations right now? And I'm, I'm thinking not with the, with the school boards or with the inter-municipal, but with some of those not-for-profits. And I don't want to say any names right now in case it's not allowed to be said, but there's one that we've met with in the past that we all visited. Just wondering if they're part of this.
So, um, we've been keeping, uh, some of those, those other partners that have been expressed interest in the past. We've been keeping them in the know and, and kind of advising them as we're progressing through the project. But our, our standard for process and what we would recommend is if we do decide to go to a partnership model, we would do some, an expression of interest and make it open to all parties. So it was kind of an equitable process. And I think that that's something that we're trying to also be respectful of what that equitable process would look like. So we're not giving advantage to any one party. So keeping people in the know as we progress through the project, but not, um, I would say trying to be, uh, beyond that until council decides, gives us some direction to pursue partnership and then we would do it as an open.
That was my next question. So you need council to say, you know, if we want to hand over the entire operations to, or maybe just gym side of it and we did like, so you need us or our council to decide at some point, right?
Right. So, um, as, as you noted on the chart, we bring back that partnership conversation to you to have that conversation with council. And that's a little bit closer. Once we get through some of that initial, um, design work and maybe want to talk about timing.
Yeah, so there's probably two, two phases there. So the conversation around what, uh, we would hope to, to gain from a partnership. I think we could probably start those conversations at any point. The, the time in which we look to attract a partner really depends on the kind of partner we're looking to bring. So if it is someone in the capital perspective, uh, we want to do that before, uh, finish that detailed design. Uh, if it's an operating partner, again, uh, that would happen probably closer to, uh, commitment to construction, uh, phase. So there's.
You don't think the partner would want to have a conversation on the design if they're going to be operating it?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, I think we, we've explored that again through the, through the interview, most of the stuff we did here. At the end of the day, the, because the, in an operating partnership, the facility would be owned by the municipality. Uh, we'd want to make sure that we develop and design a facility that primarily meets, uh, so the, the im, what, uh, the impact that someone might have in an operating relationship in terms of facilities I would be minimal. We could capture that through.
Later stages. It goes to the conversations that we've had with, with the county on the ICF and their, their hesitation, I guess would be the right word, um, to contribute at all because they don't, they're not part of the designer operations, right? So they think that we're going to build this gold standard when they think we could get away with slightly less. And, and so I, I feel like those partners, whether it's not-for-profit or, or the county to the north. Hey. Did you hear what Grand Prairie County gave? Eight million dollars annually to operate their existing facilities in a four-point-six million dollar capital contribution.
So when we did do the concept plan, just for reference, we did invite our regional partners to be a part of that conversation too. So we did invite surgeon county, City of Edmonton, um, Moretonville to be a part of the conversation to help ensure that what we were proposing is a concept plan also aligned to their needs as well.
Okay, good.
So we did invite that conversation.
There is, it's, it's a different discussion between someone you're actively soliciting to invest capital, but then, hey, your neighbors, we want your input, right? And so I don't believe we've had a discussion with somebody to say, hey, we want to partner with you to build this thing.
I think that's where we need to go.
Right? And so that is not the concept as it stands now. So we, you know, would appreciate if that's where council wants to go with this, then.
It, it might be banging our head against the wall. I'm not sure, but until we try, we don't know, right? I don't know what the deal is with Parkland, Spruce Grove and Stony on the tri-leisure, but it's something we really honestly need to consider, right?
They're a little bit of a different model because tri-leisure uses a part-time company to operate that facility.
Whatever it takes, honestly, whatever it takes to get it done and get those, those partners financially at the table too, right?
I, I can also offer, I think Donnie George is on the call too, and she might have some extra, um, responses to your questions about, um, timing and phasing the plan. So maybe I can turn it over to Donnie because she was just tagging in.
Thanks, Danielle. Um, Mary, you had a question on the phasing of it, how it might impact, um, the design dollars and probably construction dollars and the timing of it could affect us, right? So, uh, one thing I wanted to add to Craig's comment was the thirty percent is the rough order of magnitude, uh, without knowing the details of the scope. Once we get into the scoping part, we need to really look at what portions can be phased out. And depending on that certain scope, probably may need to be brought forward in, as part of the phase one. For example, the road component, the utility component, and in the building phasing, we need to consider what mechanical parts and electrical scope may need to be brought forward as a phase one investment. So it could vary, um, uh, and the details is in the details, right, as we work through that. So I just wanted to offer that. And the design, once we divvy up the package, the design package could also, um, the, uh, the, the components will vary and also the cost will be, uh, high on the design side because we need enough phasing it in two or three, whatever steps we are considering, right? So the design dollars could go up as well, which is minor compared to construction. But again, there's a relative cost differential in each step.
Appreciate that, Danielle. I mean, I think you can tell by the line of questioning that there's some desire, especially from potentially not taking out a big boring bylaw for northeast servicing, to use some of that capacity and boring to advance faster than you guys have planned, uh, between the many. So that, that is a priority for this council, for this city. That type of boring would benefit the entire city, which would be fantastic. Um, and it's been now eight years since I've a site on the pool. So I think that all those things are in my head. But can I give you three million dollars right now to get the schematics going? Like, if, if, but if it's, if you can't do anything until two thousand and twenty-six anyway, then I won't make any motions. But, um, if you could, then you were welcoming some advancement of those dollars. I'd be open to hearing that. So as we go through all these questions, just keep that in mind. The last one I had was in the presentation, we talked a bit about parking efficiencies. And we're having this conversation about K to nine versus high school up there. Maybe this is a pet question for you, Christina, is when you. I don't know who, just. Wh- when we're giving out permits for buildings, you have to meet parking criterias, right? So if it was a standalone high school or if it was a standalone community amenities, would there be more parking or are you looking at? Less parking because there's going to be shared day and evening weekend, like the efficiency side of it.
So I do believe that the concept is to share the parking because of the timings. So if they were independent, um then you would actually need more space for the parking.
Okay.
But this is based upon a, maybe going down a rabbit hole that you're not wanting to go down, but this is based upon high school needs.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, so if we were to put a high school somewhere else in the city.
Yeah.
It would require, let's say, X spots. And if you build a community amenities, it would require Y spots somewhere you're going to find a, a middle ground if you do it together.
That is, that is correct.
Efficiency by having both those located on the same site. Uh what we believe is that if uh. It's probably the recreation center that's driving the parking demand on the site and the high school, but there's an efficiency to both.
Those different times of day and week usage that would be, I mean, we can have this conversation maybe when we debate. Get to a high school or to a, taking the high school away from that. So that's just something I wanted to kind of.
And we're working with Ms. Peters team on, on response to that notice of motion in terms of where all the impacts are, but it was designed. And I guess we can say this is an overall principle, was designed as a high school site and we, we designed the amenities on that site. We're working with our design team to. Align to a high school being on that site. So the shared parking, some of the location and placement of the supporting amenities. And so I guess we'll, we'll respond on that list of motion, what that looks like.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Okay, I see Shelley's had her hand up for quite a while. Go ahead, Shelley.
Thank you, Mayor, and to administration. Thank you, Mayor, and to administration. I had a couple of questions regarding, there was a, I believe it was page eight. You mentioned studies on geo drilling, hydrology, traffic, and could you clarify what you meant by energy opportunities? Which was the fourth item on that list?
Uh I, I'll, I'll start maybe uh Miss Colossi, if you're on, you can, you jump in. But uh I think what we wanted to do in the early stage was just explore what energy opportunities might be available on the site. And see if there's anything that could be ruled, maybe ruled out uh in terms of uh future construction, but uh.
When you say energy opportunities, council, like we're not talking about generating energy or anything. We're talking about scope and scale of the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, Meredith, uh maybe I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh sure, with a, to uh Councilor Bernard, to the Chair. Um so when we looked at the energy options, we were looking at different ways to uh. Uh deal with the energy, these facilities tend to take up a lot of energy and a lot of costs in that regard. So we were looking at like refrigeration, heat recovery, where you use the heat from the ice plant to actually heat other parts of the building. Uh we also looked at solar and geothermal as potential options based on the geotechnical and the site and how it would all play out.
Okay, so sustainable buildings essentially.
Correct. Yeah, it, it aligns with our sustainable building policy that the city has, so um which I believe is on the agenda again today.
Okay, and then the, thank you so much. And the other question I had is uh it was presented that uh a projected seventy percent cost recovery. Is that with the city operating the facility? Or is that the goal by that method?
Yeah, so our, our cost recovery projections are, are based on uh. Again, current city operating practices. So it's, we gave a range of kind of seventy to fifty to forty percent there. We're early in the, because we're early in the project phase, uh that range is quite large. As we uh advance the, the projects and, and if we go to explore opportunities, uh we would refine the cost recovery projections as well. Uh that cost recovery, if we're going to go to the partnership model, could be used as a starting point or benchmark for what expectations for. Uh additional cost savings could look like from a partner organization.
Okay, have you seen success of say ninety percent or what percentage have you seen uh in cost recovery at any other facilities?
You want me to tag it?
By private means or whatever?
Um I would say that for municipally operated, uh fifty to seventy percent, depending on the composition of what's in your recreation amenity is probably standard. Um I would say that there's always a, a level of social investment that's required for the benefit the community reaps as a result of having amenities. Um I would say there are some models that are privately operated, maybe um Mike, you want to talk about those a little bit, but they're. It's a very different model than a typical municipal operation where you're talking about things like reciprocal use, um social benefit of. Um economically uh viable swimming lessons, those kinds of things. Um or spark partner rates for um access on ice. Those are the kinds of things that we're able to offer as a municipality that some private sector don't. Um but then, yes, Mike, if there's anything else you can add to that.
Yeah, maybe I'll just add a couple of points um from experiences or what I've seen in other communities, not just in Alberta, but mostly in Alberta. There are examples where cost recovery can be improved with a third party operator. And I would say just from a consultant's perspective, those involved trade off. Between social value and control and financial cost. Um so it's, it's not like you're going to get exactly the same product. Uh if you contract out the operations and improve your financial efficiency. That being said, I'd also say that there's third party operator scenarios that are achieving a similar cost recovery to what a municipality would. Would get if it directly operated the facility. So it's not like a given that if you had a third party operator that you'd be at a ninety percent or. A hundred percent or eighty percent. Um but that is the primary driver for. Almost all instances that I've come across uh for the municipality to contract operations is to improve financial performance.
Okay, and my last question, thank you, is if you have a school that's operating as a sports training facility and. I know it can be quite, you know, quite expensive to attend one of those schools and the funding that, you know, is, is given for the training. Does that all go to the schools or can that benefit the facility that they're training in as well?
Are you talking, uh just, just for Mike's already, you're talking about sport academies?
Yes, yes.
I can mention what's in our, what's in our current model and even um Miss Semper is here, which is great. She could even add to that. But in our current model, we don't make that offering. So that offering um is aligned to our reciprocal use offering of space. And we work with the school divisions in terms of their provision of that service. I'm not sure if you have. So revenues, that goes with them. So we, we take, we provide the space and they are.
We offer the programming. So uh parents have to pay an additional fee to be able to access that, but it comes through us. And it's to pay for our, our teachers, our, our instructors.
Okay, and if you're using the facility, the cost is the same, whether it's a class that's not using it for sports training and bringing in profit. Or if it's just the right, the other option.
For the current reciprocal use, and we're just kind of in the conversation with the whole Jupa and the, the new reciprocal use, but the current reciprocal use that's in place. Um sport academies do fall under um access space the same as a classroom would. Um there are a couple of spaces, um the performance arena at Service Place costs has a, has a small cost. And that was part of the model when Service Place was developed, but all other spaces are, are the same cost as a normal class would pay, which is. They don't pay for space on arenas or on turf, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all my questions.
All right, I think everybody here wants to ask questions. I'll start with you, Mike.
Uh yeah, I just, thank you, Mayor. Uh this is a follow on question, I think, for Miss George. And it, it was around the, the thought processes that phasing the build, i.e. starting. With the pool uh as the highest demand item. But it, but it's also the low, probably the highest cost and lowest cost recovery item. But the, the concept of starting and phasing the build, construction. We're thinking that that might kind of accelerate things, but. Has, has any, or maybe when would the analysis be coming forward to council to say? And you briefly touched on it, there's a lot of core services, air conditioning, electrical, et cetera, that have to be built. Right at the get go and then you can add on some of the components in a phased build, like you could add on. The hockey space later, but uh so when, when is that kind of analysis going to come to council that? To see whether a phased build is, is actually the right way to go? Because if you phase a build, you're not getting use of that arena uh or. Common gym space, uh so you're not really meeting the needs of, of residents. You're just kind of pushing that. Down the road, you're, you're, you're pushing the cost down the road, but you're, you're pushing the availability to the community down the road as well, straight? When, when's the timing of that? Analysis, not only from a construction, but a, a trade off of timing versus benefit coming. In, in that timeline that you've laid out.
Thank you for the question, uh Councilor Kilik. Uh I would definitely ask Meredith to add to uh the answer here. But in general, those kind of discussion happens at the preliminary phase of the design, uh which is yet to happen. And we need to make a decision, but are we phasing it right off the get go or not? That's a major decision to be made at that phase. Um and then it always uh is decided based upon the constraints on the resources, like the financial. Do we need to really face it or can we build it all in one phase? Or what are the benefits of it? What are the risks? And then the opportunities missed. All of those questions need to be asked and answered at the preliminary uh design phase. So um I may pass on to Meredith. Has there been a discussion already on the phasing? Team and is there anything that you can share at this point?
Uh I, I did, and Craig can pop in if he wants to add uh would be that we have not had any conversations with phasing. Based on the community response was to build everything at once. Uh we have not uh investigated any type of phasing and once we get into like a preliminary schematic design. That's definitely something we can look at to figure out, as you said, what, what needs to be built now um and what can wait. Uh however, when you push things out, then you have the potential disruption of an area that you already have up and running. With the construction happening adjacent to it. Um and then obviously costs would go up as, as zeros by based on inflation.
It, it may be at the risk of oversimplifying things. I think, you know, as you look at your decision points through the future, right? It's that schematic, preliminary schematic design, I think is that tear line to look at technically how things can be phased. At the end of the day, the preference would be just to build the whole thing. Um right? And so designs on phasing will be based on probably first and foremost, the ability to pay for it over. Whether you go in one shot or over time. And then second, what's technically feasible based on those uh that preliminary design, right? And, and so informed obviously by the, the needs, um right? And, and so I, I think that's that tear line, uh council, that you're looking for, for that discussion.
Think also just to add to, to Mr. Fletcher's comment, we'll have better understanding as we proceed through the pro, the project. What those impacts are of only building a pool to your point in cost recovery of only building a pool unless you added this or this piece came with it. So I think that's where that is in, but also if you wanted to adapt a park ahead of that, what would that look like? And all those kinds of conversations that I think are, are important to be a part of.
Twenty six or late twenty six, just, I'm just trying to get a sense. To understand, is it, yeah, I, I think I want to build, like, you want to get it done and. Get the benefits to residents and kind of bite the bullet and economies of scale and. But.
Is it based on our current timeline? That would be uh late twenty six, twenty seven conversation.
Thank you.
All we got, okay, Ken, you're up next.
Thanks. I'm a tack on question two in relation to some of the mayors asked most of my questions. Um so if an announcement was made tomorrow and uh school was announced, whatever, it doesn't matter if it's a K to nine or if it's a high school. Would the, would the school be separate and standalone from the community amenities site?
So the, the way that we've designed it currently, it is that the, the two projects could be built uh independent of each other. The, the current layout though for the site, I will say, the, the, the way that we've put things on the site. Uh is based around uh our, our best practices or considerations for a high school. If it wasn't a high school, uh it may be worth going back to looking at that overall site layout to make sure that, again, our. Typical considerations for elementary or junior high schools are. Taken into account anyways as, as a project progresses.
But ideally though, I mean, if that announcement was made at the, right now, before the end of twenty twenty five. And you're, you're just saying your timeline in relation to doing design is twenty twenty six, you're really not going to. Bang up against and it would actually be advantageous because it would actually give you ad known then, right?
I would say that um to Mr. Cameron's point, the only factor that I would say, and maybe Christina, you want to speak to us a little bit more, is that the way that we've designed the site. Um and I'm not sure I can say this without having this more robust conversation in advance and another motion that's been made. Is there might be need for us to reconfigure some components that we have in order to serve what a high, what a junior high elementary would normally use. We did the design based on a high school, which is a very different clientele. And so I think administration, we would need to go back. If this decision was made and discuss what that process would look like. Um and I'm not sure Miss Peters will have that, but. No, I think um we'll be discussing this on seconds, so.
So, but I'm, well, I mean, just saying though, is the announcement came. That information would feed other information, so it really wouldn't, it wouldn't be detrimental to the community amenities site. Design work that's being planned for twenty twenty six, it would just, you would just factor in the fact that you've got a different school now.
I would say that for the community amenities, it would function, we could say in function on its own, school site is independent of that. That being said, again, this was, this was meant to serve a high school. It wasn't, the amenities were selected. It was all aligned. The parking was shared and configured. There are some impacts to the larger site that are a conversation we need to have. Because that does change that. There's some nuances that that really does change the need for some of those components because we need, need to find more parking. We would need to look at the sport fields and where they were located. There's probably, and maybe Miss George has some further asks. There's some impacts on roads and bus layovers that are way beyond my skill set to offer.
I think if I'm getting at the gist of your question, right, which is ultimately about sequencing and impact, right? If a decision's made in the next two weeks on a school, as an example, council decides. It's a different paradigm than what was originally planned. Um that would be factored in then, right? There would be some reanalysis, it would be factored into the design work, right? That would be come forward. So I think that's what you're.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm driving at. Rather than being a start from scratch, it would just be basically factored. Factored into the new paradigm.
Christina wants to jump in on this.
Yeah, I just, um, I want to maybe put some parameters around what is, is being discussed here. Um right now, the area structure plan is designed for a high school site. Um the servicing is designed and scaled for a high school site. Transportation is designed and scaled for a high school site. So a change to it, whether it be a K to nine or a seven to nine um direction, as Steph mentioned. The site itself would have to be re- relooked at, but I would also suggest that there are probably some. Uh be some additional look at the servicing um and those components as well. It would be a reduction probably in servicing because it's fifteen hundred students that this area is designed for versus. But it's not something that, um if a decision is made to go this way. It's a decision to direct administration to make amendments to an area structure plan. It's not a decision on the area structure plan that would happen. And so we would have to go back. Study all of those impacts incorporated into the area structure plan and the neighborhood plan. And the site plan and work with. So it's, if, I would just suggest it would have bigger impacts on administration and scheduling. Than just two weeks.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm understanding some of your constraints and I understand. Thank you for giving us a little bit broader parameters. But I'm saying some of that could be totally taken out of our control if there's, if the province all of a sudden made the announcement that. Oh, we're going to plop a K to nine there versus a high school. So we're not working within.
They don't say where they, yeah, they don't say they got, we have funding for K to nine. It's real well.
Okay.
We'll do that one.
That's right, fair enough. So, but I mean, potential, yeah.
Sure. And obviously you want to work with our partners to understand what their needs are, what we're going to look at. Like if it's not, I just want to like provide a bit of perspective about what um our partners would need to provide. Um whether it be Alberta infrastructure, whether it be the school divisions. Um and then working with our recreation partners.
Fair. So in relation to though, getting ready to the previous conversation we had about the road. So the road is there, is the other servicing there that if there was and. Is the other servicing ready to go in there or is there any bigger? Is that part of the bigger dollars that we would need to?
My understanding is that when we, when council. The twenty five nine dollars. Yeah, if we made it accessible, so we have servicing in the road to the.
I would maybe ask Donnie. George. I don't know if Tommy's online.
Yeah, and Meredith has been the project manager on this project. When we did the CAS project, it actually took servicing up to the site. So whatever we need on the site servicing is has to form part of the scope for the community amenities. So we do have servicing up to the site.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the conversation. I just one other question that's separate. The area to the north, that area that could potentially be long dog park. As that's our site right now, currently, that's in our inventory. Like, there's a stormwater management pond, but there, but is that ours? Like city of St. Albert's?
Ms. Willis, she has added some feedback that it's road right away, but I don't know.
Just, yeah, just immediately north.
Right away for regiving Adrian as well.
But I don't really, it's, I don't know if it's ours or if it's Alberta traffic.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it was ours or Alberta transit or whatever.
So the so that that pond and everything north of the site is all shown as part of the road right of way that extends from regiving all the way to the west to the retro to six.
So it's not ours. All right, thank you.
Christina, you're up next, and then you, Wes, and then Natalie.
Okay, so you mentioned that it was acquired in twenty twenty two. That was after negotiations because we made the decision, council made the decision last term to make this. So I think it was like twenty nineteen when we actually made a decision, right?
I think expression of interest came out in twenty eighteen, and I believe the decision was made in nineteen twenty, but that's when, of course, COVID hit. And so I think a number of things kind of were a bit delayed on that front. So it was actually signed in twenty twenty three.
Did we do anything on like geotechnical or any plans prior to twenty two? I know that it took some time for the negotiations to sign off on the land, but between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty two, do we do anything? Or are we basically starting this time clock as a twenty twenty two?
So we started basically the project, and I would say twenty one, twenty two, when we started the needs assessment and the concept planning for the site. And the geotech work has all been a part of this phase of work that we started in twenty three and twenty four. So that's really when we advanced that one, which was part of that one charter that council approved that had that component in it.
So bike, do you have anything else? No, okay, it's all good. The bike park. So I understand we're doing all this geotechnical now. And a couple of things, first of all, on that site, so you're telling me that we can't do anything on it for two more years because we we don't actually get the land, which was a bit of news. And there's next, is there a reasonable expectation that we will have it completed in two years? Or will is it also that's a potential or reasonable expectation that it will be delayed further before they can hand it off to us?
I'd say at this point, we're anticipating a smooth transfer after the two years of monitoring.
And we're looking at the end of twenty twenty seven or the beginning?
It really will depend on when the capping work is finished. Again, we're anticipating that to be finished spring of this year.
To so summerish, that's mid, right? Okay, so can we, after this is self finished, can we plant trees there at all? Or even if like, let's say we put a bunch of dirt up there, so it's super high, can we plant trees or is it just going to be dirt only?
It'll be fairly similar to Real Park. So it's a fairly open space, trees have the potential to break the clay cap that's there, so it will be a fairly open space.
Because I'm just thinking, when you do a bike park, one of the things is, you know, to avoid hitting a tree. That's one of the goals. But if there's no trees there, then we're just looking at hills because I'm just thinking it would be. I know, that's what I'm thinking. It's like, if you don't, can't actually risk, you know, life and limb, then what's the point in going? So.
Well, maybe Ms. Willis or Ms. George have something to add to that as well because they're coming, helping advance that portion. But right now it sits with a ropehead and they're doing the clay cap to Mr. Cameron's point. And so I think the intent was to let it be in the state it is for the two years, but that we're starting the monitoring of the methods on the site.
Are we looking at, because there's like the BMX, which is like a lot of hills, like they have like lots of little hills, right? And I mean, you know, you can hurt yourself well that way, too. Are we intending to do like a skills section? Because if you go to Hinton, they've got a skill section where you can fall off of all sorts of pieces of wood. And then they've got like the bike park where you can just run into another via another bike going the opposite direction. You've got both options. Is that the intention for this is to do a skill section and then a trap? Or do we know?
You know, I'd say it's a great question. I think we're probably early in design on that to give you the the full detail of what would be included in the bike skills park. I think we could explore a variety of opportunities and risks as part of that, though.
Because I mean, I guess you can tell, just that kids have been waiting a really long time for this bike skills park. And and if there's any way that we can, even in twenty twenty seven, start moving that forward, to have something on there other than, I guess, it would be large amounts of dirt.
To that question of of phasing, again, go back to our project implementation plan, which suggests we'd like to take the the whole site, some of those facilities up to the next level of design to understand integrations. And we think that we do believe that even if you're developing the outdoor amenities, there'd be a certain amount of site development that would have to happen in line with that anyway. So you you may phase it in such a way that the outdoor amenities or a skilled bike skills park is the first thing that you build. But we need to understand what the impacts of that or what supporting amenities might also need to be developed as part of that phase of work.
I also think there's a due diligence we want to do on behalf of the city to ensure the environmental monitoring is everything's progressing as we had planned before we kind of start altering the land as well and using it.
And we still do to the design in twenty twenty six, when this comes forth, or sooner potentially, right now, is is there, can we actually have that discuss, or you guys plan to do that discussion? So in twenty twenty seven, when you have it, we could actually just like start piling on dirt because you can't dig, so we're just gonna be piling. So could we start piling on dirt in twenty twenty seven potentially if we have that ready to go?
Yeah, that would be the intent of of the next phase of work here. So to get into the schematic design phase will allow us to make more informed decisions around phasing of the entire project, so the indoor and outdoor amenities.
So that's the other question is, so we have the detailed design for ten million, and then you have the schematic. So would you have to do the schematic no matter what to do the detail? Or is this like a bonus thing?
No, the the tip of the two pieces typically, they follow each other in any capital construction project.
Well, if we only did the schematic, could we do the outdoor stuff with the schematic? Or do we still have to do the detail anyway to be able to put on pickleball courts, soccer fields and?
Good question. So the schematic would get us to the point where we could make decisions around phasing. And then if we've made decisions around phasing, we would carry those components forward into detailed design. So regardless, you go schematic design into detailed design work. If we have a discussion at the schematic design phase around phasing, we would just carry those those elements that we intend to move forward, we could carry through on the the detailed design.
So would it be an additional delay or would you just come back to council sooner? If you if you let's say you only did schematic, and then would it just be then that you could come back sooner and then say, do you want to do detail? Because my concern is we say we're going to do schematic, and then that delays it a year and a half. And then you go, great, now we're going to do detail, and it's another year and a half, when we can just done everything in the same timeframe.
Yeah, we we can look at the different ways to bring that forward. So as part of what was for twenty six was looking at either a schematic phase and then the detailed design phase, or asking for all that funding upfront with the check stops still being there at this schematic design phase. So there's different ways of securing the funding for the work. And based on how quickly the work happens and how quickly council makes decisions, we can continue to kind of maintain momentum from that schematic and detailed design.
So we're not, I'm just gonna keep on going down like a question list.
You can make decisions fast.
Yeah, so what I'm wondering is, is there, would it make any difference if we were to bring forward and say, bring forward this bit? Do you have the the business case ready to go right now? Like, is it possible that we say, just bring it to us in April, and we'll tell you whether or not you want to keep going now? So that way, when we can hit the hit the dirt running, so to speak, in twenty twenty seven?
I think I'd bring in Donnie George or Meredith Willis to to speak to how quickly we might be able to move through future phases if funding was available.
I'll just start and then perhaps I can ask Meredith to help us. So we can have a quick ask of the whole design and then schematic will be part of it. Or we can ask for just the schematic and then come back for detailed design, which would give more clarity on the scope, what amount of design, additional design dollars and construction dollars that we are talking about. And also the phasing of it will come as part of that. So there's benefits in waiting to come over as a second ask rather than asking the full amount at the beginning. So Meredith, do you want to add to that? There there's timing issues as well.
That, yeah, yeah, and and how you're planning on contracting the project as well, right? There's just multiple different ways, whether you're doing a traditional design bid build, whether you're doing a progressive design build, whether you're doing construction management, integrated project delivery, all of those can play in as well.
So maybe could I ask Donnie and Meredith then, if council said, bring this to us as soon as you can? What does that mean?
We would just be asking for the schematic at this point.
Absolutely. But what timeline do you think? With with, you're not writing a check, to be clear, but right, how fast can you get it to council? I think that's what I'm hearing.
All right, sorry, are you asking for like the project?
Not waiting for budget twenty twenty six, but council says, bring it to us when you're ready, right? And get ready as quick as you can. I think that's the.
Yeah, I think I'll default to Donnie.
Well, we were planning to bring it as part of the twenty twenty six budget ask, but if you ask us to fast track it to bring it in twenty twenty five, then we definitely need to look at the project charter and an AR to go with it, asking for the schematic design dollars.
So you've got some, you've got some analysis due to to figure out when it could come to council if we were directed to bring it in advance of the budget deliberations.
Correct, correct. We were planning for the twenty twenty six budget cycle at this point.
Yeah, I I can hear you the panic in your voice, Donnie. I think, just so we're clear, I'm not saying that we want to have the design brought to us this year. I'm saying if we were to say, we're going to give you the okay to move forward with the design. So you're getting like an extra seven months head start as opposed to saying, give me the actual the next five months, make it happen. That's not the intention. We're just saying, so if we were to say, we're going to give notice of motion right now, that you bring us what you have, because I don't know, you haven't done budget for twenty twenty six yet, so do you have the info for us to say, hey, let's do the schematic now and move it forward? And then sometime in twenty twenty six, there'll be a outside of the budget schedule potentially. The next council could say, let's now move forward detail design. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I totally see what you're saying. And maybe, Donnie, I think that recreational parks will work with engineering and planning and our colleagues around amongst the corporation to see how fast we could advance that. What I'm hearing is you want that quicker than the twenty twenty six budget cycle. But I would say the one factor is we've built our work plans for twenty five based on this kind of waiting until the twenty six budget. So we'd have to go back and see what the impact of that decision would be. We've taken this project as a very gated approach with council, bring you back, get some further direction. And our intent was to add it in as a twenty six charter. But if your desire is to do it faster, we'd have to go back and just look at how quickly we could turn that back to council with with a dollar figure to advance to the next stage of design.
I have no problem putting that as notice of motion. I'm just wondering if we can get that information to us or you need to in the background, or because again, I don't want to do a bunch of work.
Yeah.
It's what we don't want to do, say approval, screw everything up for everything. And you still can't do it for seven months anyway, and then there's expectations that aren't met. Or if it's like, yeah, we can do it because we're going to be contracting it out and we can manage this. So do you want it just to be notice of motion today? Or do you want to wait and tell it as known in a couple of days how things are flowing first?
I would say, Donnie, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we took it as notice of motion, we could put in the notice of motion or timelines for which we could advance the work and give you that as information as well and say, upon these timelines, we could do this. And this is a dollar figure you'd be looking.
Be an IR.
You do it as an IR if you'd prefer.
That's another way we could tell. No, this, here's the deal, we got fifteen council meetings left before we're out. So we don't actually have as much time as we think to actually make decisions. So I'm more than willing to do this and send it to you as a notice of motion today. And if necessary, we can pull it. But I really think that if it's possible, I think this council would like to do something. Make this happen sooner than later, and that way at least you're ready to go.
So could I just ask Counselor, Donnie and the team, a notice of motion, right, is is twenty one days? Is that sufficient time to do the analysis?
Can wait. You can do it on the sixteenth of September.
Okay, so that that was my question, like, ideally it is, but if it's not, you're amenable to it to let us.
A little bit more time would be beneficial just because of the magnitude of the project. We want to make sure we're giving you good information.
I'm not going to put a date on it. If you need to do it on the sixteenth of April, fine. If you did it first of May, whatever it means, somebody to have the proper information in front of us. I think just so that we can start to move this forward, I think is the goal. Bring from us to council. So I'll give it, I'll put it in the system right away. The other question I had, though, was like, we are talking about the operators. And then you're saying, Kate, depends on what we're going to do, but we actually don't know which way we want to go. If you want to have the capital, if you want to have the other way. So is there any, I guess I'm just going to tell just just general feedback. I I think that the operator potential needs to be discussed upfront before you start putting money into the game, even if they're just going to be a general operator, because they could still come back and say, this is our best ROIs. This is how we can handle it better, even if we can just take that as feedback and see if it's compatible. But because we don't even know which way we're going, to eliminate it out of the gate or to say, we have to do this now is actually going to limit our opportunities, just in just general discussion, you know? So I'm just, if if there's a potential for a partnership, I think it needs to be as early as possible that we investigate that, even if it's a noncommittal to see. Even if we say that Sturgeon County and the next council meets the Sturgeon County Council, and they say we're in, the big thing they want to have is have some say in what we're doing. And so we we can ask them at the end and say, hey, what do you think? And and so just as a, just a general feedback, I think that that operator discussion, at least putting that our ROI out. So I know you said that requires a council motion, but putting that ROI doesn't put us into any hypothetical commitment, but it does tell us exactly kind of where who's interested in at least forming it, what kind of conditions they have.
And I appreciate the feedback. Oh, sorry, you go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I would, I would just comment to the counselor. I completely agree with you that if there is a capital partnership in place, that the contributor is going to want some say into the design. The fact that you've gotten this far without having that say that intense interaction with the potential capital partner might be a detriment to getting a capital partner right now unless you're willing to open up the program a little bit or the facility or the site, depending on what you're looking for. But in terms, so so for capital, yes, for operating. I've seen examples where the operator has had some influence over design before they actually have to contract to operate. But I've also seen more often than not that the operator, you know, goes through the ten year, fifteen year term or five year term that they have to operate the facility and then you turn it over to a different operator. And any of the input that you would have received from the initial one, maybe may be in line with the new one, with the new operator that you choose, or may not be in line with the new operator that you choose. So it's almost like from an operating perspective, you're probably better off to plan it as if the way that you want it, just because you're not sure, like that operating agreement is never in place for the forty or fifty year lifespan of the facility.
Yeah, I I guess the thing is because we don't know if we're doing capital or not, we need to put it out there so that we can say we're not doing capital, but we're planning for operating, whether they have a say in it or not. Because there might be an opportunity that we're, just put it out there and then move against the, the council can be like, we're going down this path that we're not, right? And then if we're not, we, that will determine how much they even, we even talk to them or not, right? But we, I, we can't make that decision of which way we're going until we know who's at the table and if we're interested in meeting with them. So just a thought is that we probably need to make that, or the next council's been needing to make that decision sooner than later is what I would suggest. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, Wes?
Well, a lot of questions been asked and answered. So the only question that I have now is, is when we contemplated this site, the the site was filled, if you will, by our amenities and the school and the parking requirements. If it got changed to K to nine and and the parking requirements, for example, are re- are reduced, what what's the what's the opportunity of perhaps putting in a restaurant in there or?
Something more commercial?
More commercial activity in this. I don't know, got root for a hotel, but but maybe a restaurant to draw people to the area for other reasons as well. I don't know if it's allowed.
Yeah, and I would, part of Ms. Peter, what I would say is we've been planning for the recreation amenities for the for the city. So in terms of other developments that could take.
Some commercial adjacent, right?
Area structure plan itself, I, I want to say. On the area structure plan.
This is what you close to the mic, Christina, so Shelley and Natalie can hear you.
So the area structure plan itself has commercial wrapped around the community amenities site to build upon those synergies and to support them, which is also part of the reason why, like, again, it was designed for a high school site, kind of looking at what are the needs of a high school.
They need a seven eleven.
I've heard McDonald's, that's all my my niece and nephew wants.
Star, yeah, it's gonna be a star.
Or Harveys.
So so that's already been contemplated then?
It's part of it, but I don't think it's part of the actual city site that is, that's ro hits services around.
And where we would look at retail and lease opportunities, we would within our facilities and our amenities and how those support the operation of the of the the actual recreation facilities.
Go ahead. It's looking at the area structure plan right now. That site is just identified as community amenities site. It's basically specifically to accommodate passive and active recreational needs of the community. It's basically specifically to accommodate passive and active recreational needs of the community. High school site, uh, indoor arenas, et cetera. It doesn't talk about those commercials.
But it's they're they're adjacent, right?
Well, there there are adjacent, but if you're talking about, I think that's what you're talking about council broadhead is reutilizing some of the potentially feedback land for something else, then I think you're talking about probably amending.
If you're going to do commercial, you would have to give it back to Rohit, I guess, to develop, right?
There is a clause in the agreement.
Yes.
No, there are specific things, you know, with the use of it, um, because I could check the agreement.
Okay.
The angle that I'm thinking about in terms of the question is if we're going out for prospective partners and they have an opportunity to put in a a restaurant, perhaps that sweetens the pot for them to operate the rest of it as well. I don't know.
So that hasn't been contemplated under the concept, which has been contemplated within the design, which again, um, we would need more information. I'm thinking about like getting their development permit, for example. We would want to know what the impact of that use would be. Um, the use might not even be listed within the zone. Um, so it really depends on the type of project that we're looking at. Um, it isn't right now designed to be a mixed use site. It is designed to be, um, a public, um, institutional type of site. So a hotel, uh, restaurant, all of these things are are feasible and possible, um, but not right now within what has been designed and imagined for the site.
True.
But I think councillor, it's all based on if there's ultimately, if there's a decision for a K to nine, what that design and footprint looks like. And if you opt to to alter the S P to permit that, that again brings us, I think, back to the previous comments to the drawing board to look at that the concept more holistically, right? And I don't know how much space would be available or not available, or what I think the team would have to do that that analysis, right, to figure out what is even feasible.
Yeah.
These site to start with and then other options.
And so I think some decisions based upon the April second council meeting will inform a lot of subsequent conversations regarding timing even for the design of the community amenity site.
Is there, like, is there any, uh, is there any bottles out there that you've seen, uh, that actually such things?
Like commercial pads?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are. I wouldn't say they're they're not directly owned and operated by the municipality for sure. And in the instances where rec onsite is combined with those pads, it's I'd say the more innovative third party operator arrangements that exist, but it's not, there aren't a lot of them, like one I'm thinking of this in for McMurray, there was quite a bit of thought put in, uh, you know, same. But it all depends on like it it helps the, uh, the business model on the site because the municipality looks at a site differently than the private sector does. You don't typically look to recover your capital costs. And as soon as you put amenities that are doing that, right? Like if you commercial, you lease commercial space, it recovers operating in capital. So then it makes the the financial picture better.
Who knows? But anyway, thanks. That's my.
Natalie, your hand was up at one point. Now it's down. I just want to make sure you're good.
Yeah, I'll I'll ask a couple of questions. I think most of my questions have been answered, um, but but I'll I'll go for a couple of them. Um, my first big question, this is probably for you, Mr. Fletcher, is about capital project, um, costing estimates. So I I'm curious about whether, you know, how how confident we are in in estimates, kind of now that we're we're dealing with a major trade partner governing via late night tweets, um, you know, what the conversations have been around that and and trying to make educated guesses about costing.
You take your own bill?
Well, you could, so no, it it's it's a fair, like councillor, but, uh, and so we've had beyond the amenities site, right? We're we're doing our best to try and figure out what the the practical implications of these things are. Nobody knows. Um, at the end of the day, I don't think, right, we're doing a certainly taking stock of, uh, those elements where we source things from across south of the border uh, and trying to figure it out. Uh, some things, perhaps there are alternate options, some things there aren't. Uh, I I would defer certainly, uh, Donnie, if you've got any discussion specifically. Um, so councillor, to say it's recognized, but I don't have an elegant answer for you, except to say that the unknowns that are, I think plaguing all of us are certainly, um, creating some, because yeah, and so we we're we're going with the known nodes, I guess, to to paraphrase another U S politician.
That does, I was going to ask this later, uh, at the end of the meeting, but, um, the premier has asked municipalities to look at their procurement.
We are looking.
Yeah, and it sounds like some have already done it. So it's for the longest time we've heard you can't because of trade agreements.
Yeah.
But if no one's firing the trade agreements, then are we going to get like a memo on that?
But once we have some information for you.
Yeah, that would be great because, um, it's coming from the premier. They're looking for responses. So when we run into her.
But, you know, as an example, there's a good article, yes, not to jump too far down the rabbit hole, but some things you can't buy.
No, our trucks. But, okay, I would, I would appreciate some. Perfect. Keep going, Natalie.
Thank you. Donnie, were you going to add something?
No, nothing much. I I wish I had a crystal ball, but we are going ahead with the current procurement plan to put our projects out there in the market and see what comes back. And then we'll make a reassessment of can we afford it within the budget that we have been approved? What are the reasons behind the price increase, if there will be? And then kind of look into the details of it, because right now our materials could be purchased within Canada, across the board, or coming could be coming from U S based on the scope of the project. So it may be a little premature for us to even have a discussion. So we'll just wait how the market will respond and then bring some information back. That's kind of where we sit with an engineering right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question is just about the agreement with Rohit. Um, so that specifies what kind of uses can go on the donated land. Um, is there mention of of the high school site in that?
Just a school.
Have the agreement, um. Give me just a second, please, councillor. I just had it up.
Ali, cannot wait till, uh, April first when we debate that motion?
Uh, sure, I can. I guess it's a heads up then.
Yeah. All right, go. Okay, sorry. I thought you were going through a big one.
Land transfer agreement includes a number of uses, um, including, but not limited to, I guess it's just including community hall, daycare facility, elementary or secondary school, uh, emergency protective service, government service, indoor recreation service, outdoor recreation service parks, public utility, religious assembly, transitional residential service. I think that's about it.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Um, and then I guess this next question to this, I mean, this can be in the next debate as well, but, um, so we know that any change to use impacts, you know, servicing and roads and parking and retail business kind of viability and site size. But I'm wondering about, uh, safety planning, like, are the safety considerations for best practices different for kindergarten students than high school students?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Um, and that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Awesome. Anyone else have any questions that popped up?
Mayor, if we could take a fiver, that would be amazing.
Guys, I think we're done with this conversation. Um, so I want to just close it off. There is
It's just information.
Just no motions with it. So if we are good, I'll let everyone go. We'll take a ten minute break. It's like it's been two hours. So we're good? All right, let's take a ten minute break. It's eleven oh nine. We'll come back at eleven twenty. Seven minute break.
Dude.
So if you said to be by the end.
We'll talk about solid waste.
I just do it by the end of main, Kathy, so that there's some flexibility.
Mayor, just so you know, I'm here just eating.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm a C. Where's Wes?
Uh, he had to go to the bathroom. It's coming.
Yes, I'm here. All right, it's eleven twenty. It's eleven minutes. Okay, we are on to waste. Um, so waste minimization strategy, sorry. And, uh, there is a recommended. And there is a recommended motion at the end of this because it's a bylaw change. And I have listed Tim and Louise to, and John, all to present this. So are you introducing them?
Um, this is, uh, Luigi.
John. All right.
Alex, may I ask some conjecture remarks? But again, I think the, the do out on this or the, the decision request from council relates specifically to updating the bylaw. Uh, for principally third party or sorry, uh, multi-family dwellings. There we go. Thank you. Multi-family dwellings. Um, but obviously the team, um, is prepared to sort of talk more holistically about sort of EPR and then depending on where your questions go, which is why we've got all the experts at the table across the way. Anything else?
Nothing else to add, but officially we're just here as the standing committee for home to recommend that council pass the bylaw zero six twenty five. Uh, it's just the team is here to outline the changes made to the residential bylaw to align with the extended producer responsibility program. We have, uh, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Stewart and, uh, Mr. Porter here to give a brief presentation. For us, thank you.
Three times. You want to be introduced the fourth?
Thank you. My name is Tim Saunders. And we are, we're here today. Uh, how we got here was back in May of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, public operations presented to the standing committee of a whole of different programs that were in place with respect to our solid waste management program. And one of the motions that resulted was directing administration to amend the residential solid waste bylaw. To enforce or add in the requirement that free stream waste collection is mandated with multiple dwelling units. Uh, at the time in two thousand and twenty-three, the, uh, the intent was to provide a phased approach, uh, because there was concern about the multi-dwellings not having space. They may not have been set up at the time as well. There was, uh, a lot of information that was still yet to come with respect to the extended producer responsibility program, which is the recycling program. Uh, essentially take the fiscal and operational requirements of recycling and turn that over to the producers through the province. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we were successful in doing a significant amount of engagement with the multi-dwelling developments. And we are now prepared to propose the residential solid waste bylaw amendment. So just a little bit of the background, the, uh, the overall intent of the bylaw amendment is to add the three streams to the multi-unit residents. Single unit residents were already included within a residential solid waste bylaw. So this is an effort to, uh, improve our waste diversion rates, reduce the amount of landfill waste. And, uh, align the, align the three streams for all residents of St. Albert. The work that was undertaken was a lot of engagement with the producer responsible organization. Uh, which is the pro, uh, circular materials in our case for PPP. Um. To determine what the plans were, were for the EPR implementation. Phase one implementation will occur on April first, two thousand and twenty-five, and that is the curb side pickup and our depot operations as well as HSP. The financial responsibility is going to be turned over to the producer. The second phase of that and where this is, uh, linked to the multi-unit properties will occur on October twenty, October first, two thousand and twenty-six. And this is when all residents will be brought into the EPR. Okay. So the main, the main, sorry, the key bylaw amendments include that on October first, two thousand and twenty-six onsite collection for garbage, organics and recyclables will be mandated at all residential facilities, including the multi-dwelling units. He has engaged with the multi-unit facilities and we are going to be requiring that the multiple dwelling development meets the requirements of this section. They have the opportunity to, uh, have city collection if that is a possibility. Or we will be requiring them to have a, uh, waste diversion plan submitted to the city for our approval, uh, as well. Um. Think we could go, there's, there is a bunch of clauses as well, and we can talk about this as we, we go through our presentation, but, um. The benefits of the revision are diverse, more organic waste, reducing landfill use. It's going to align with the EPR policies and really what the alignment was doing. Was it was a program that was going to have additional pickup being mandated to the multi-unit facilities. So we wanted to ensure that they were able to incorporate all of their changes by that time. And they weren't going to incur additional costs in advance of the cost of the recycling being turned over to the province on October first, two thousand and twenty-six. So that speaks to the potential cost savings with the waste diversion programs as that will be turned over to the producers. Community impact is that there's standard, standardized waste management for all residents. So our timeline, we're proposing the bylaw amendment comes into effect on May first, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, our timeline is ongoing with our public awareness and stakeholder consultation. It's been very positive so far. Um, in fact, it is almost, uh, consensus that all the multiple dwelling units are happy with these changes and have, have really been looking forward to it. And on October first, two thousand and twenty-six, the multi-unit residents will fully implement their three stream systems. Next steps for council is a review and approval of the bylaw revisions and amendments. Support our public awareness and compliance program. We will be monitoring the implementation and address any challenges. So we, we are going to be a partner with the multi-unit facilities over this time to help them. Um, we, we have a level of expertise that we'll be able to support them on. And all this will align with the provincial EPR rollout in October of two thousand and twenty-six. And that's the presentation. If there's any questions.
Awesome. Um.
Yeah, just a question.
And then you make.
All right. Sorry. I, I've been assuming then with the rollout that then, uh, these residents living in these places will have access to Mike Mitchell and all that now that did they, they didn't have that always necessarily before, did they?
They, they, they didn't, counselor.
Yeah.
Um, you, in order, in order to use Mike Mitchell, you need to be a rate pair. So the multi-unit residents that the city wasn't servicing, they weren't considered great pairs.
Yeah. So will this free them up to use Mike Mitchell now and, and any whatever it looks like in the future potential.
One of the other motions that came as a result of the two thousand and twenty-three committee meeting.
Yeah.
Was about the, the cards for residents. And that is something that is still on our radar. We're trying to incorporate that at the proper time. So that that will be something that will then be implemented effectively for Mike Mitchell as well as our organics.
Cause that'll, I mean, I'm just assuming now, and please forgive me if I'm incorrect, but just due to the requirement or the changing in EPR is bringing about how we handle our waste stream. Will that change how we handle our bins? Well, we still have a blue bag or will we have to move to more of a different bin?
Go ahead and spot it.
Yeah, ideally we, we don't know is the answer. Um, we, we currently have blue bags. It's worked well for us. Um, when, when the pro takes full responsibility one day here, you know, in a few years, they may, they may choose to use bins instead of blue bag. Um, they haven't indicated to us that, but it, it is come April first, it'll be status quo for here for a while.
Yeah.
It was a deliberate decision by administration to opt into the program, which allowed us to maintain the service while the producer responsible organization got their feet wet and we could then ensure that the service requirements that they were going to provide match what we wanted.
Yeah, but because, I mean, like, like John was just mentioning, when, would the costs of the bin be on the rate payer then if we had to move over or would pro, would the EPR?
Circular materials?
Yeah.
Circular materials.
They would be responsible for them back.
Okay, so a little bit further, we, we are planning for a utility rate reduction for the recycling component that will coincide with the uh, phase one being incorporated here, and that's going to be coming forward and made with the remainder of our, uh, rate revisions.
You know, that question's coming.
I was, I was, it was right on the tip of my tongue.
You're good.
Yeah.
So if they contract out, they're not a rate payer, but they will have access to Mike Mitchell or not?
Um. He would for PPP. Yeah, they, they, well, not, not necessarily like for, for PPP, um, they're going to have that onsite. Um, so they're, they're not going to need to use Mike Mitchell as an example. It'd be for, for other things like, um.
Batteries, electronics.
Yeah, the batteries, the batteries are, um, you know, it's, uh, through a different pro, um, they are going to be collected through EPR. It's a different string. Um, HSP, um, household products that, um, you know, again, that's a different pro. Um, so all those types of things for multi-residential will be typically done onsite and then be covered by the pro to and, and responsible, the pro is responsible to make sure that that program is in place and, and, and they're paying for it. So.
And, uh. This applies to the, the large buildings like Riverbank Landing and, uh, Botanica and everybody, right?
Every residential property in the city of St. Albert. Yeah.
And just curious, how did the discussion go with those big buildings there? I, I imagine that's fairly complex to so three string.
Yeah, it, it, it can be. Um, it's not unique though. Um, a lot of them are, a lot of like, I, from our, from our May twenty-third scout meeting. I, I've been content, I've been in touch with Botanica on a relatively regular basis. Um, and then in our engagement in October, uh, we heard a lot of positive feedback. Yeah, there's some, there's some concerns about constraints and the house and, and that sort of thing, but we're willing to, we're, we're, we've committed to working with them to help them. Like, we can't do it for them, uh, cause we can't negotiate for them with the private, private haulers and so forth, but we will, or, or circular materials for that matter. Um, but we will help them lay it out, um, and best practices. We gave them a lot of information. They were very receptive, asked some great questions and, uh, were put at ease, I would say was the general consensus from that meeting.
And all, all new buildings have it, they must incorporate it into their new builds as part of their permitting process.
Yeah, it's well entrenched in B C. There's millions of these buildings, so.
Botanica's biggest concern was they had multiple shoots on a, on one floor. So if they had to have, maybe they have maybe four shoots on a floor. One of it would have to be for organics. They were concerned about some of their residents from the other side of the, the building dragging their organic material to that particular shoot rather than the shoot right beside their suite. Which would be just maybe potentially, um, for garbage at that point. So, so that was, that was their big concern. As far as recycling going for now, that particular building, they're absolutely doing their own anyways already. So, yeah.
It's an expectation of most people nowadays, especially lived in a single family home and move into one of these in retirement, you want.
Yeah, I would agree.
So, yeah.
Um, okay. So the other one, for when we're retrofitting the little guys, like I'm just thinking of some like, there's some apartments in Aitkins though, where I'm like, I don't know where you put these extra bins. So that was also they figured out a solution because like you can only put so many clouds into Volkswagen. I don't know how you're supposed to put these bins in there and still have the necessary parking.
Yeah, um, it, you, you do have to get unique. Um, if you, um. Tim, can you go to that?
Right there.
Yeah, that, sorry, Louise. Um, if, 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 if you look kind of at the footprint here on, on the screen here, I mean, you know, there, you we, we, we did hear that in the presentation, there was some concerns about, um, spacing. This isn't new for the, the, the waste hauling companies to, to, um, to do this sort of thing. They'll, they'll provide input. Um, you could stack them up. Um, if there is a concern, you know, there may be some, um, retrofitting that's involved. There would be a cost to that for them. Um, it wasn't a big concern in, in the, in the outreach that we already had with, with these complexes. Um, other than, you know, the, the, the one or, one or two of them that, you know, and the footprint is smaller, as, as you say, counselor. Um, those types of things we can work with and, and kind of rationalize idea. They don't have to necessarily be big bins like this. So there's other municipalities that have front load bins for garbage. And, and maybe for recycling, yet they have, they have our bins for organics. They may have two or three of them. That may be, that may suffice, right? Like, so it's, it's all going to be dependent on the individual complex, how much, you know, how much organic separation, waste, waste separation that they truly want to do or, or even have.
Cause they wouldn't have the yard waste. They would just have kitchen waste.
Yeah.
You know, we don't take current, the multi-family residents that we currently service curb side. We, uh, the organic side, we don't want the yard waste because then it becomes too much, right? Like it's, it's, uh, you know, it becomes basically I C I waste because it's, it's private contractors doing the yard work. It's not, not the particular resident.
One of the, one of the items within the bylaw amendment, you'll note is that we have, we have a requirement for a diversion plan to be submitted to the city. So we will be a partner with them developing in, in each individual multi-dwelling development. So we, that way we will know how they're going to accommodate it. Then we'll be working with them over the next eighteen months.
It's like, the one of the concerns is just the potential odor of having, if those, if the organics is not picked up regularly enough, that it could be a very, garbage smells bad on its own. So without, since you put the organics in there, it could be quite bad, but you're going to be making sure that that happens then.
The organics though is currently being in, is in the garbage can.
Yeah.
The odors there regardless.
Right.
Um, that's one of those things that can be worked in the diversion plan where we can provide our input and insight. Hey, you know what? During the summer, when it's hot, it's better that this get picked up once a week. Just like we do.
Um, so we can make sure that that happens.
Yeah, maybe partner with.
We can encourage.
We can recommend.
It's a condo board, Willis.
Yeah.
Also, you have in here that there has to be a limit of ninety kilograms that goes into a container. So is that also for the big containers, like the big, the big ones or just for our little guys?
For a silence.
Do we seriously have a problem people putting more than ninety kilograms of waste in their containers? Like where they put cement?
Um.
It does happen.
That's, that's where my, my head went, the toilet.
Race to the toilet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, sawdust and dirt, uh, would easily be over filled it up, right?
Wet materials.
No, though, I mean, no one's weighing it.
The truck.
It's a truck tries to lift it.
Yeah, the truck could.
The truck labors when it's beyond, uh, measuring. And the, and the claws only have so much hydraulic capacity. So if it's heavier than that, um, the claws are more likely to let stole of the cart into the hopper and the operators don't like that so much.
They have to dig it out.
I don't know if they dig it out or if it just now becomes a new part of the.
Dig it out.
Dig it out.
Yeah.
We need to give these guys a raise. How many, um, this, this is not a frequent occurrence though, right? Or is it like, oh. Uh, the other thing was we got very excited in this bylaw about flat and cardboard. So that it should have put a lot of temps, last camp, I'm times chuckle flat cardboard. So the one thing I was trying to, it says if it's flattened to this size, then it can go in the bag. But I was also just trying to get clarification from people who have it, like if it's larger or they don't want to stuff their bag with it, can they put it below the bag as long as it's flattened or does have to be in the bag to count still?
So ideally in the bag, best case scenario in the bag.
Sure.
Cause that's going to keep it dry no matter what.
Right.
So if you put it out the night before, even the morning doos sometimes will, will, um, moisten it. That becomes less, you know, you know, that can damage the, the, the integrity of the, of the material. Now, if it under, it, it, it doesn't get left behind, counselor. As long as it's a manageable size where they can pick it up. It is manual collection. Um, we would encourage our contractor to just take that sort of material. Um, hailing that, they could also bring it down to Mike Mitchell and maybe throw it in the compactor and bail it.
So you mentioned we're going to have a reduction in this because for the recycling, but we didn't have a timeline of when we should expect that to come to.
It's going to be coming with the municipal, um, revisions here in April.
In April, okay. But it won't be taking effect until next October.
No, the, the phase one, the phase one, which is the single resident right now becomes effective April first, two thousand and twenty-five, next month. And we're planning the revision accordingly for our contracts that we're going to have in place with circular materials.
We don't have an idea how much it is yet?
We do. Uh, it's approximately. Do, uh, it's approximately seventy-five percent of the recycling rate.
So what are we paying right now?
Six bucks.
Fifty-four.
Ready to make a motion.
I think it's coming forward anyway, isn't it though?
Six fifty-four is the current recycling component of the utility rate, and that will be reduced by seventy-five percent. On April fifteenth.
I don't need to make something first to look forward to, uh, so it's around four bucks, or so we're coming down. Yeah, four, four fifty, hit beautiful, um, so this motion was just dealing with the, um, residential. And we didn't touch on commercial at all, like, there's a lot of ways that comes from commercial, so it, do we need to, or?
That was one of my questions, because the, the bylaw used to be called the solid waste management bylaw. And the new name is residential solid waste, so. Oh, so that was an older solid waste, okay. She's right where my head was, is the I C I sector is something that we could mandate eventually, but now we can't do it through this bylaw, it would have to be separate bylaws, so. Why, why would we have more than one bylaw? Maybe it's you.
We can amend that as a topic with the YouTube, yeah, we can change it. It's just right now, it, the current one is called residential, so we're not changing that.
Have we had any discussions about that, or like the implications, have I missed it, or?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we've been talking I C I, we've been part of the U N R B, talking about, so, you're. Sitting and talking with our partners and solid waste collaborative about I C I, um, waste. Absolutely, um, there's, there's diversion, uh, opportunities there, um. It's really about timing, um, everything, everything in the last year and a half, two years has been on E P R. And focusing on that, um, it is, Felipe is really excited about getting, uh. Getting going on our next waste and diversion project, I C I, once we get, once we have some more data. Uh, that we're working with our partners on, on gathering, we will be certainly looking at that and potentially bringing something forward, but. Uh, when you look at the reality, I C I waste is approximately sixty percent of. You know, sixty to seventy percent of a city's waste, um, yeah, it only makes sense to look at that. And, and see what you can do as a municipality.
So I know because the E P R, and there's been so many question marks about how and when, and there's been so many question marks at E P R. Um, I feel like from a man's perspective, it was, it's been stressful, so, um. From a timing perspective, is it better that we just wait until at least we get this implemented and then go to phase two, which is then discussing commercial, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's exactly, we've been really, we've broken down all, all things waste into let them fit together and establish. Strength in our program before we add on the next piece, so that this is successful.
And once we implement it, we're going to really have to be focusing our attention on the education component, so there are a couple new items that. On April first, we're going to be able to, our residents are going to be able to put in our blue bag, actually, residents of Alberta. Are going to be able to put in there the plastic clam shells, it's like, uh, number one P T thermal forms, as they're called. So the plastic clam shells, strawberry containers. Yeah, um, and the non-beverage tetra packs, so the, the non-beverage are the ones that Campbell's Soup comes in. That's an example. So not, not your, not your juice box, but the big tetra.
Chicken broth can go in there.
The clam shells get repeated.
Not juicy, anything that has a deposit on, doesn't go in your blue bag, it goes to the recycling.
You put it in your blue bag, then G F L gets it.
It's gonna be good news.
Yeah, that's great, so, so those types of things, we're going to be educating.
We can put glass in there too?
No, yeah, not that.
Still breaks, right?
We're not sure, we're not sure ever, we keep hearing, it's gone back a few different times that. Remember how they were talking in Bammer about them being able to put it in their blue bag, they kind of. Took a step back on that, it only makes sense, it is, it, it goes into a blue bag, it's going to get damaged, it's. Yeah, yeah, no, it's absolutely P P P. Yeah, um, but, so, but again, we're, everything's status quo. On April first for residents, um, except the adding the clam shells and the tetrapacks and our curbside recycling. And the depot, they're going to see no change, the, the, just that they're going to see it. They're going to see that the pro is going to be responsible for bearing those costs, not the, not the resident or the, you, the, you great pair.
Uh, the other question, just for the multifamily, because like, if they have to pick up commercial and, and recycling. Obviously, we're not the ones doing it, so there are actual businesses that can fulfill this need currently established, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not like they can't actually find someone to be there.
No, there's, there's many, there are many different contractors now doing that work.
Those recession-proof businesses, really.
Like policing, it's never going away.
It's never going, yeah, garbage, some people consider like, uh, smelling, okay, so, um, that's it for me, thank you.
Found out yesterday that Alberta produces the most garbage per capita in Canada and in the world.
And we don't.
In the world?
Yeah, and then there was a councillor from Sylvan, by the way, their Fog Dog theme blew up. You know Fog Dog was going to make the fluff, and we're going to turn it into energy, remember that? They went to, they went to visit the plant in the urban, it's closed, so I'm not sure what's going on. And what the councillor from Sylvan said, uh, there's still really not a, enough of a desire from our residents to do the work. Which is interesting, right? And you use the example of, you go to the airport or you go to a rec center and you look at. When they do allow diversion with the organics recycling, and it's just a big schmuzzle and it ends up in the landfill.
It was a good example.
Are you aware, this is back to I C I, anyone in the region mandating I C I diversion and separation? I know Calgary's the only one that I've ever heard of doing it, but is there anyone? Edmonton region, no one's doing it, yeah.
So, yeah, that could be phase two, if we really want to take that on, so.
Felipe, he messaged me on Teams, he's really excited about it, and the corporate waste diversion plan as well.
Probably a good, school boards are gone, I mean, the schools have been trying to put green bins, like. Individual schools kind of do it on their own, but they'd be a good place to start with the I sector, um. Okay, I don't need to make a motion on the blue bags, so I did my work yesterday. Calgary and Edmonton have lowered their monthly rates by seven dollars, Leftbridge went, eliminated it. Like, which I don't understand how they would do that, because there's going to be still some costs, but they totally get rid of it. Strathcona's giving a rebate, Spruce Grove lowered theirs, so how can those municipalities do it? Now, and we have to wait till April fifteenth, just curious. April first, we're getting money from circular materials, isn't it?
It is, it is just to align with the other rates coming forward, but we do have our contracts essentially in place, they are not finalized. But we are now in a position where we've broken down the existing Mike Mitchell depot that is included within E P R and not, so that we've.
There will still be some.
Yeah, so we, we have those numbers in place now.
So seventy-five percent of.
Six fifty-four.
Fifty-four, yeah, it's good, because I was all ready to argue with you guys, love this stuff, um. I don't know if you guys remember, it was a resolution out of three municipalities saying that if. The province did this, we would do our part by passing that savings on to the residents, so instead of keeping all the cash for ourselves, so I'm glad that it's coming.
Not to speak to other municipalities, but it's, it's not entirely apples to apples as well, Leftbridge is an example, has their own. Own material recycling facility, so they're going to be getting revenue from that as well, right? So we, we, we don't have one of those.
So maybe that's what offset it.
Yeah, because.
Really, honestly, the four or five dollars a month we're going to save here, it's, it's awesome, um, yeah, but.
And, and Mike Mitchell.
Sort of a perception and a principle thing, really, right?
Yeah, and then Mike Mitchell, it's not just E P R, right? It's, it's, we, you know, we, Styrofoam is, but we take garbage there, we take, uh.
Tires and all the stuff from Karma, yeah.
Bike, bikes, we use, uh, we use that facility to have our compost giveaway. Um, those types of things, so it's not, the, the operating cost of Mike Mitchell just isn't E P R.
We can't take Styrofoam now, right? There's still, like, just ask, that we can't put it in our.
Not, not in the blue bag, we, we take it at Mike.
I know, we do it here.
All right, um, oh, sorry, Wes, go ahead, yeah.
So this is a good news story all the way around, uh, we know what's going on here, but, uh. What's your education plan for the, for?
Trusted, and it's all up to you.
When it comes to the multi-family dwelling councillor? Social media, website, um, we, part of our agreement with circular materials on the P P P side is they, they. Um, you know, they give them a, a share of money for us, for promotion and education as well. Um, we will be working with them, use, utilizing some of their, um, you know, insight and, and, and. So that the message going out is consistent across the province. That's one of the actual benefits of this program being provincial wide, is the education, once April first hits. It, everything that goes into the blue bag is going to be the same across the province, so there's not, going to be no guesswork. So we'll all be able to share that education, it won't matter whether you're looking at our. Recycling webpage, or Strathconas, or Leftbridges, like, it's going to be the same. So, so, but absolutely, like, for new items and stuff like that, what goes where, we'll update our Waste Wise app. Uh, to, to where to take it, that sort of thing, so. Um, it's already begun, we're, we've been, we've been talking about it, we're implementing the, the education, the communication plan, basically.
Good, no, good, thanks. I, I don't know if anybody on the screen had any questions, but, um. So, this, this is great, is Saint Albert City admin taking any steps to implement? Kind of a better recycling in, say, this building or public works or anywhere else, like, it's great to have. Everybody else do it, but are, are we actually doing it ourselves and showing leadership there?
Intent is the walk the walk, right, councillor? Just talk the talk, um, we are doing it, um, Felipe mentioned that, you know, on, on our corporate waste diversion plan, like. Um, we, we should, we could be looking at and doing better. Um, but you can always improve, right? Like, wa- waste, waste diverse, waste diversion is continual improvement. Um, so, you know, we, we all think about what we've done, you know, in the last five years, you know, you know. Putting things in an organic, uh, pail instead of throwing in the garbage, um, I know I do that way more often than I used to, so, so. Again, it'll be, it's more, you know, we're, our, our areas looking at developing that plan, Felipe's excited about implementing that. And then, you know, we've got to try and promote the buy-in, because we do need to walk the walk. Um, as the, you know, the ones that are setting the rules.
Maybe, maybe I could just off, we're not starting from zero, councillor, right? You could see that, uh, already recycling, right? And, and the point's well taken, that I think there's improvement across the corporation.
And, and that's one of the corporate objectives?
I move that, uh, the standing committee of the whole recommended council that bylaw five slash twenty twenty-five be passed.
Any opening comments?
Good news story, really, I, we've been looking forward to this for a while, and, uh. I think it, it's a, it's a good news story for our residents too, every time we do something and we can do it more effectively. And oh, by the way, reduce your rates and improve our environmental footprint, this is a good news story.
Go ahead. I just want to thank staff, because this, working to get this E P R actually up and running has not been a simple task. I'm seeing all the, you're like, yeah, I know, like, it was, it was a lot of work for, um, the staff to actually make this happen and, and hit these deadlines. Other communities, some of them have not been able to meet the deadline to be able to put this patient phase one on time. Um, so it was really about just persistence and diligence and making sure that we actually met all the requirements. And, and so that we could actually offer this savings to this, um, residents now. Because some municipalities are not able to say what we're able to do today, because they, they just could not. Figure out everything that need to get done and get those paperwork and get approved in time, so thank you guys for the work you guys did behind us.
It's good, I'm excited, obviously, it's been something I've been working on and passionate about. Um, sitting on recycle accounts of Alberta, though, it's interesting, I'm looking at their, you know, the three Rs. They've got six hundred, refuse, rethink, reduce, reuse, repair, refurbish. Remanufacture, repurpose, then recycle, then recover. So, is, just because you can throw it in your blue bag now, doesn't mean you should throw it in your ba- blue bag now. The hierarchy of waste diversion really starts in, in your shopping habits, it's kind of. Yeah, that's a little, that's a little excessive. Okay, Wes, anything to post? Uh, possible, all right, unanimous, and it's immune, so let's have lunch, you guys could stick around for lunch.
When are we coming back, Kathy?
Twelve thirty, sound good, guys?
Very much.
Yes, good job.
Where are we? We are on procedure by law.
Yeah.
Now we'll get into building policy. I just got you over here. It's all excited. Okay, so you're going on. Would you like to introduce Marta?
I'm good, thank you.
Go ahead on procedure by law, Marta.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm just here. I have a few slides. I don't normally do this, but I just put a few slides together to talk about the current procedure by law amendments that are before council for your consideration. I've outlined in detail in the agenda report exactly everything that's being proposed to be changed and the reasons tried. High level, there are some amendments that are required by virtue of the municipal affairs statutes amendment act of last year, which is otherwise known as Bill 20. So there are three kind of separate little amendments that are required due to that. Those are related to conflict of interest provisions being added to the MGA. And there's a requirement to incorporate if someone declares conflict of interest to incorporate that into our meeting minutes. So we've added that into the procedure by law. And we've also added a definition there. And then the other aspect has to do with public hearings. And so Bill 20 made a couple of changes with respect to that. Number one, we're required to make sure that public hearings are always held electronically. So there's a couple of amendments to clarify that in our procedure by law. It won't change our practice luckily, but it's just a clarification that always there will be an electronic offering for public hearing. And also the MGA now says that you're only allowed to have one public hearing per land use related by law. So we've clarified that a little bit in the procedure by law as well. And so while we're here making these amendments, there is also there were there's some clarifications that administration wanted to add to the procedure by law, just kind of based on practice that's developed since this by law was put in place. So those are detailed also in the agenda report, but what I have outlined here for you are the kind of the results of the changes that are going to be made. So what would change if these changes were committed into the by law? So one thing we were proposing to add is that agenda planning will be able to add or sorry, we'll be able to cancel or change the date, time or location of a council meeting without a council resolution. That currently requires a council resolution right now. Sorry, to change a date, time or location currently requires a council resolution. To cancel a meeting does not. So we are suggesting that all of those things cancelling, changing dates, times and locations could all be done at agenda planning. Instead of requiring a council resolution for some and not for all.
Time and place or certain time or place is interesting.
Yeah.
So if I was to say March 18th, it's going to be completely virtual. I would need a council resolution to do that.
Technically.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah. So this this would allow agenda planning to make that change. Although that although we're already saying March 18th is already going to be like, I guess that's depends on that. That's a change in location because we're already going to offer a virtual option. Now it's just going to be no SAP option. So I guess we could talk about that. But yes, that's an example. That's something that we have to talk about because of that wording in the procedure by law.
That's interesting. Good.
Yeah. We are also recommending to add some language into the procedure by law regarding expectations of conduct for the public when they're attending council meetings. So things like make sure your phone is off or on silent, leave the meeting to take a call. A clip, nothing, no change in practice. These are really expectations already, but things that just aren't in the procedure by law. You are not allowed to speak unless you've been added to the agenda. Like we don't actually say that in the procedure by law currently. So now we're proposing to add in that kind of language. We are also, there's something interesting in my research that I came across when I was preparing these amendments. And in some municipalities, there is the ability for council members to change their vote during a council meeting if the change of the vote doesn't change the result of the vote. So if it's a five two vote, somebody on the five side wants to move over to the two side or three doesn't change the result. There's a there's a provision added to the procedure by law now that would allow that to happen. We can take it out, but I saw it and I thought, oh, this is interesting. Why not? So it's included for your consideration. Also related to that, we do already have in the procedure by law, a provision that talks about how reconsideration of motion of votes can happen at a council meeting. So if there's a vote and it needs to be changed at the same meeting. And it would change the result of the vote. We already have the ability to do that in the procedure by law, but what we've added in is like clarification for how that would work. We've added in a table that talks about if it's a by law or a motion that got passed, who can make a motion to reconsider and who can't? And if it's a resolution that failed, how, who can make a motion to reconsider that? We don't have that detail of clarity in the procedure by law right now. I don't think we're changing anything with respect to what we would actually do, but it does kind of clearly outline now the process that would be followed if that ever occurred. I've added in a reference to to clarify that first reading of bylaws is not debatable. It's just to get the by law on the table. So that's added to the procedure by law. We are already all aware of that. But that would just be clarification. There is also a reference to the FOIP Act in our procedure by law. And of course, the FOIP Act, the name of it will be changing later on this spring. So I've just changed that reference to a more general reference to privacy and access to information legislation instead. And then a couple of other things. While we're updating the meeting minutes requirements to add the conflict of interest provision, we just we just added some things that are already in our practice, like, for example, we note the name of people from administration were in attendance at the meeting in the minutes, but we don't actually require that in the procedure by law. So we've added those kinds of little details in just again to update our practice, like that's already our practice. Nothing will change. It's just a clarification. And then lastly, there is some interesting thing in the procedure by law right now where we actually require unanimous consent to close public hearings. That does not need to be in there for any legal or legislative reason. And we've never actually encountered a problem as a result of it. But I'm proposing to take that out. So it would just be a simple majority vote required to close a public hearing. So that is just a rundown of all of the changes that are made. So in terms of implications of what would change, really not much. There's a couple of things that are of interest, maybe whether you're allowed to change your vote at the same council meeting or not. Everything else really is just a clarification. We're at Bill 20 kind of amendment. So we're just recommending that by law five 2025 be passed or that SCOW recommends to council that it be passed. And that's the end of my presentation. So I'll stop sharing my screen. And then if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those.
This is one long by law.
It is.
It's all been memorized, right guys? Questions?
I had a general question not pertaining to the the proposed changes, which I'm aligned with, but it mentions in here that any presentation that is given would be sent to all of council after the meeting is
It says it in the procedure by law?
Yeah. I think I read it in there and it's not a practice that we typically do.
Well, there's so there's two separate things with respect to presentations of the public. There's some that are related to public hearings. And there's some that are related to items on an agenda that are not public hearings. And there's some that are related to items not an agenda. So I don't know which part of the procedure by law has that reference. I'm going to guess it's the public hearing one. In which case, yes, that does occur. With the rest of them, it's, I think on request is how we share those presentations. Yeah.
I'd have to look it up. I'm missing my note here, but it was just to get clarification. Is that was something we were doing by by rule or or not?
Well, and as a practice, we don't include. So if someone makes like, for example, there was a presentation today. That would not be, that would not form part of the corporate record. It will not be part of the minutes of the meeting. Because it's that was an item that council didn't like approve to be part of a minute. If someone came and presented it without really any oversight. So we don't include those things as part of minutes. But if we had received that in advance in legislative services, we would have shared that in advance or to all of council.
Good.
Cute.
Shalina. Thank you to the mayor, Marta. A few questions I have here is on the FOIP section there where it's just written that a broad reference is applicable. Why are we not waiting for the change and actually have it match what how the FOIP is changed?
We do know what the new legislation will be called and there's going to be two acts. I prefer it to be vague in case the province changes it again, that I don't have to change our procedure by law again. Like it will be Like it will be updated, all the references to the FOIP Act and all of our bylaws are going to be updated now. Because of the way that the province did the amendments. So it's, there is no other legislation that will be applicable that could fall under that section one hundred and forty-one with the way it's reworded. But that was why I made the decision to do that from a drafting perspective.
Okay. And why would you want freedom of information vague? Like that could be pretty serious, could it not?
It's, it encompasses that legislation. So the act, the two acts are going to be called access to information and protection of privacy, and they're all under the umbrella of access to information. So that's why I worded it that way. I, I'm not saying that it won't be considered and that that law will be applicable. It's just more broadly worded in the proceeding by law this way.
Okay. And then another question in the paragraph, Schedule F, where it's mentioned that people wouldn't be able to address council if it's not something on the agenda. So would that be something like, you know, the pickleball group coming forward as school board having, you know, say, or somebody talking about bike lanes? Like, I feel like we're shutting down, you know, public input to council or blocking them from coming and speaking to council with that.
No, they can still register, right?
Yeah. So we didn't take away the ability to come speak at meetings. All I've done is I've clarified that there needs to be authorization in order to do so and what that process looks like. So there, there are, it just says that you need to apply for permission to come speak at council and explain what your topic is. And then once you've received permission, then you follow these steps. Like, so there is still going to be the ability for the public to come speak to council on items that are not on the council agenda.
Okay, but it says they can be refused too.
Yes. That is, that is currently the practice.
What would that be? What reason would that be for?
So it's subject to the chair's discretion. So it's just to, to basically codify the understanding because the public actually doesn't have a legislated ability to come speak to council at council meetings. They have a legislated ability to observe and watch, but not to actually present and speak. So it's just to simply clarify that reality and to, to kind of make, make the understanding clear. But it's not the St. Albert's practice to refuse. It's just that we have the ability to do so. And this is more transparent to to show residents that that's the process that we follow.
Okay. And then the other one is why would we ever have public input online only?
Because the MGA says so. So for the Bill twenty made a change for public hearings that say that public hearings have to be held virtually.
But in addition to being
Correct.
And it seems the, the choice is being put forward here where people can't come to council.
That's not how we drafted it. I think the section is seventy. I have to just find it, but we, we we will always have in person plus virtual. We won't just have virtual public hearings. It will be both. So I believe the way we drafted it was to have both available.
There you look here.
Yeah.
What's the rest of Rametsky?
Okay, let me go back here. It, I just made a note here, no SAP option. So it was
Okay, so I, section thirty-six point one.
Right.
What we've added is public hearings must be conducted by electronic meets. For clarity, this means that in addition to in-person attendance, individuals must have the option to attend public hearings by electronic meets.
Okay. Okay, I'll dig deeper on that one. And okay, and then the agenda planning where it says the, allow the mayor. So what if the mayor is not at agenda planning?
Then it's the deputy mayor, the next deputy mayor in charge.
Okay, so should that not be noted in the by law?
So under the deputy mayor duties part of the by law, we didn't need to amend it. It's in here somewhere that the deputy mayor takes over the duties of the mayor when the mayor is unable to attend. That's already a blanket statement in the procedure by law. So we don't need to add it again. It's already it's already in the kind of the front part of the by law.
Okay. And then my last question is, we could have just went forward with just the changes that were needed from the province for the by law. And I'm understanding the rest of them, which is about ten others or twelve others is just good ideas.
Yep, correct. And they're just administrations ideas. They're not necessarily even good. They're just being amended for consideration. It's just things that we've noted that, you know, practices.
Keep a running list.
We keep a list a going of recurring issues that come up. And when the opportunity presents itself, we, we just are presenting them. But certainly I'm not saying they're good. I just, they're just for council's consideration.
It's a good point. And you know, the, the legislated changes are you can, I talked about, I guess, the language, right? But at the end of the day, those are non-negotiable. The rest counselor, I think council is not supportive of one. It would be stripped out and, and you know, you wouldn't pass it.
A lot of them reflect, we're doing anyway.
Okay. And can you clarify who administration is? Is it just legislative or where's this discussion come into play?
Sorry, I, I missed the first part of that. I apologize.
If you could just clarify who legislative, who administration is, like who has his discussions that these would all be good choices?
Yeah, it's the executive leadership and the chief legislative officer and legal advisor.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Good. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just have a few questions. You're just for clarity right now, Marta. So you mentioned one public hearing per land use by law change. I, I'm just trying to figure out when would we do more than one public hearing for a land use by law change?
We, we used to have the option to. So we could close a public hearing and then if we felt that more information was needed for whatever reason on a big matter or virtual matter or an interesting matter or councils didn't feel ready to decide because they, they were, they felt information was missing, but public hearing was closed already. We had as administration before Bill twenty, we used to have the option to hold another public hearing, advertise and hold another one. We don't have that ability anymore. We have the ability to hold one public hearing per land use by law. That's the wording. Now this will be interesting because maybe you just give it a new by law number. And hold a new public hearing and maybe that's all you need to do. But I think a new by law number might not be that simple from our administrative process side. We haven't really worked through that. But technically speaking, per by law, we're only allowed to now hold one public hearing.
So I'm thinking of a situation that, you know, any other time, but let's say that the, the developer comes forward, he says he wants to do this. And then we say, we close the public hearing and then I remember once there was a motion to postpone the decision, I think Landers came in, there was like a delay. Instead of saying no to it, we said, go back and revisit it with staff, but didn't actually do a vote. So in that situation, they couldn't have another public hearing, right? They could go to, could we say, go to staff, come back and then make a decision to let another public hearing? Or what would happen on that? Would we have to just complete it?
So, so we do know that once a public hearing is held, council can't receive any further information in order to make a decision. So I think what would need to happen is we would need to create a new by law in order for that to happen. So probably there's ways around it. I think they're more like process intensive than we used to be able to do. But because the MGA said that, I'd like the clarity to be in the procedure by law as well.
Sure. Examples of that happening in other municipalities that we've heard. I mean, obviously they changed it for a reason. Probably in response to some
I'm not sure. I'm not.
I think that's probably reasonable, mayor, but I don't have any examples.
Okay, so we have something about changing the council vote. So in some ways, I'm a little hesitant about this. Because let's say it's a five-two vote and then it's like, okay, I can just switch my vote to four-three now. Basically is what you could do. Can some public hear this one? No, no, this is just a general council vote. So you could just say, or it's like, whatever, seven, zero, six. But yeah, you know what? I'm going to change the other side now that I know that it's for sure going to go through. So I'm a little like, unless you thought you actually made a mistake when you voted, to just kind of just flip on this, I feel.
Certainly not necessary.
Yeah.
I, I did see it in a couple of other procedure by laws, like mid-sized cities. And I think there have been instances that I can think of where it was a mistake, like, oh, meant to. And so that would be, that would be, you know, very like easy that we could just change it on the minutes if there was general consent of council. Because it can either be done by general consent or by majority vote. It's not just an automatic you say.
One person just.
Person says it has to be general consent of everybody. Yeah, okay. Or put it to a vote to let that person to change their vote.
If that is how you change.
That's how, that's how it's working. Yeah.
So it's not declarative. You'd actually literally have to say, council, is it okay if I change my vote now? Because I made a mistake.
Says no. I mean, if, if I went to vote, it's still passed, but it's not a requirement at all. We don't need it in here. I just, I just thought it was kind of, could be useful in certain aspects. And it would be certainly easy to run.
Yes. Well, it's got like this two-step thing. I don't even know how, then that, that's, that's whatever then I guess.
Honestly, we, we had a discussion at our level about it. We just kept it in there so you could consider it because none of us really knew how.
Is there a rationale? Like, I, I don't understand the rationale of one twenty-three, twenty-one, given one twenty-three.
Well, when, so the rationale one, because it doesn't change the vote, like it wouldn't ultimately change the result of the vote. But the other one, the one oh five, which is the kind of reconsideration part, is if it would change the result. If it doesn't change the result and someone just made a mistake, then we could just quickly dispense with it. It's not needed. But that was the rationale, simply more for ease of, ease of fixing up the state basically.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence, but I think, I'm going to think about it. I'm not going to do a thing today. Like, we'll just like, think about it, right? But
So it would be very simple to just amend this
Yeah.
by law directive meant to take that section out when it comes to council. Or alternatively, we can just have that alternative motion worded for council's consideration. I think it'll come back April first. I can, I can do it that way too.
So I mean, I just think, let's say, let's say we voted and Ken couldn't figure out which color was red and green and he hits the wrong color, right? Happens to him all the time. Because he sees blue and yellow. But yeah, and and he says, hey, I wanted to change it. Don't we just typically say, we'll just redo the vote then? Like, if someone says I've got the wrong vote, you would just redo the vote? And then it would be
What we have to do is just put it to a vote, whether we want to redo the vote and then redo the vote. So it's, it's kind of just like getting rid of that one extra step in between.
The, the vote thing. Okay. Okay, just a thought process. So the, on page one sixteen, when you talk about the meeting dates and times. Just going to go to that page two. So we're all together on this.
So we're trying to
Page one sixteen, schedule a agenda planning process. So the one thing I have is just that the mayor being able to change anything arbitrarily, like that's where the concern comes in, like, because with this, the mayor could just simply choose, hey, I'm just changing it like tomorrow or later on today. And there's no requirement for advance notice for the other council members to be able to even arrange their schedule to meet it or anything like that?
There is, there is a
Is there?
Minimum amount of notice that needs
At a quick time.
So we've built that into the provision. It is twenty-four hours notice that has to be given. So you know, if, if, if a meeting, I mean, yes, this would allow for, for the chair of agenda planning of the day to say, we don't have a need for the meeting next week.
Sure.
We're going to cancel it. That's already able to happen without a resolution. But this would allow, hey, I think the time should be missed. It's better for everyone's schedules. Let's not start it at one. Let's start it up. And then notice would be provided to everybody, the public and to the councils. That's what it would allow.
I get that. I just and this has nothing to do with you, right? But I'm just like, what's I just, I don't know why we would ever have it just, because we've never had it arbitrarily changed before. Obviously we couldn't. But it also had a predictability for everybody involved about this. So I'm trying to figure out why we would need it.
Well, so the MGA says that council has to authorize any changes. So if council allowed this change, this addition to the procedure by law, then this is the process you would create for changes to be made. If you didn't, then it would be a matter of just leaving it the way it is, which is cancellations cannot be at agenda planning and everything else, all of their changes, dates, times, locations would have to happen by resolution.
And that one
It's cumbersome, right?
It is, but it's also, I think it's rare that we don't actually have a heads up that we're going to need to do that. And if we need to have a special meeting, the mayor can do that between four hours notice and just declare a special council meeting. So this would be like, we can, agenda planning, we can see what's going to happen pretty clearly, which would give the council the opportunity to make that vote. So that's where, but just so, so you know, council, that would maybe something would be voting on. And then on page one thirty-seven, let me just go to that page. I just wrote a note and I don't know what I meant, so I will get to it. Maybe it wasn't page one thirty-seven. Maybe that meant a one for all I know. I have an approval by the chair is what I wrote. So I think there was something in here. I'm just going to do one. It's on the page one forty-one.
C is having the word subject to the approval of
Subject to approval of the chair. There, oh, that's it. Speaking on, coming to speak to council and saying that we have to approve of the chair. So I understand that sometimes people want to come and talk about things that may be controversial or something like that. But that's another, I, I'm just I don't know how to put this into words. I'm just concerned again about being able to tell the public that whatever you wanted to come and say can't be heard. When we haven't put those requirements in before. And I realize that every time we do it, there's different requirement, but
I think this is kind of just in response to kind of the general like there's, there's, there's the sense that there needs to be more for meetings. Generally, the ability to control like the, what happens at council meetings and council meetings belong to council. Like, that is where council does business of the city out in a public and open forum. It's not for people to come to speak about what they want to, if it's not on the agenda. It's not. That is, that's, that is actually, it's, this way is more transparent about the process. Because if someone has something to speak to, that's not an agenda and the chair of the day decides, and I mean, agenda planning, if all of council is free to attend, this is where the decisions are made. So there's obviously input from all of council about that. But if there's a reason not to allow somebody to speak, then this, the way this is drafted, it would, it would be open and transparent to the public that this is how the rules of the meetings go.
And let's, I've never refused anyone.
No, ever.
No, I, I would never. But let's say I did. Any decision by the mayor can be challenged by council, right?
Well, that's, that's the, like, if that decision happened at agenda planning, like the, the chair, the, the mayor has the ultimate authority in consultation with the CEO at agenda. So a decision is made at agenda planning, there would be feedback from the rest of council, but still the, the decision is final. Then when it comes to the council meeting, if that person still showed up and made a request to speak and somebody else saw, there could be a motion or something by a counselor to allow somebody to notwithstanding what was decided at agenda planning. There could be some, there could be something like that. But this is really to kind of protect the agenda of council to be the business items that are the business of the city. And to allow people to speak on other items that are not on the agenda in accordance with the process laid out.
But it's a deliberate decision. I think, you know, from, from a purely administrative perspective, I mean, council needs to determine what you're comfortable with in terms of the public access. As Marta said, I think it's important to highlight that some people think they have a right to come to a council meeting and talk whatever they want to. They don't actually. They, they absolutely do not, right? And so to do so, they register and ultimately it's either the, the public hearing is separate, right?
Yes.
This is everything but public hearings. And so that's sort of the genesis of this, right? And so you hear there are some councils who have open mic nights, right? Which inevitably end in disaster. All the way through to some that don't allow people to come in, right? And, and, and so all that is to say that on that spectrum, you know, I think it's, it's up to council to determine what you're comfortable with at the end of the day, right? But understanding that there is nothing that is forcing to allow anybody to speak outside of a public hearing.
There's just some protection. I hear that. I just I don't know. I just, I just wonder if it still couldn't, because if, if a counselor can still put forward a motion to let that person speak, now this has become a huge story about whether or not the person even gets to talk. I just don't know if it could be something where it's not just first of all, all left on the chair's shoulders, because let's just say that the mayor says, I don't want that person to speak. Now it's like literally like, I'm the bad guy for not letting that person talk. It's all on that person's shoulders for making that decision. for making that decision regardless of what everyone else thought. And then you, then you have an additional motion about this. So I'm I'm just not sure if we were inadvertently opening a can of worms here is kind of. And I understand that I just, I'm wondering if there's another solution to this, where it's not just all left on one person, where if it says it's such the chair, um, they could bring it forward for council in some way to agree with them or something, so that way it was not just a thing. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I I don't know.
Uh, I mean, we have. I I I, I've seen, so like Bill explained, there's places where anybody can come talk about anything whenever they want. There's places where you can't come talk about anything except for things that are on the agenda. Um, there's places where the agenda planning process is actually a committee meeting and it's done in a public forum and it's like a meeting and everybody comes to it and it all gets decided like that. Um, then we have our agenda planning process, which is uh kind of an administrative not meeting, where agendas quickly get kind of like sorted out. Um.
Recently, we've had majority of council at most every one of those agenda planners.
Yes, so, yeah. Um, so we could, we could prob-, I mean, I I haven't seen anything different from those kind of options out in the procedure by laws that I've looked at. Um.
I'm thinking, just thinking right now, Marta. Is if if the chair chose to say that someone was not approved, that that council was notified of it, if nothing else, so that if they did want to challenge it, that they could, you know, at least they could discuss it with the chair and see if they wanted to reconsider, or or they could bring forward a council motion without having the person.
Sure.
It could be part of that little follow-up that we set to agenda plan, right? Yeah. So I I don't know if we could put that in the writing or if we wanted to motion that, but if if nothing else, if that if the chair chose to to say no to somebody, that all the council was notified by email. Um. The decision and why. Like, that way we don't have to make this into more of what it is.
And and I think, Council, if I could just follow up, you're you're talking about a hard no, right? Because there have been occasions where it's um, this council meeting is jam-packed. Are you willing? Can you ask us to get the next council meeting as a sample? That's okay.
It's a timing issue. That's not a known. It's just a, you can't pitch in issue, but that would be helpful.
So in terms, like, to make that happen, there's a couple of options. We can do a motion today or um based on what I've heard here. I can I I can just add that language right into the amending by law for councils to see on April one if everyone's okay with that. Um, or I can just add it in as an alternative motion that can be moved on April first by council. There's a lot of different options.
Do it now. Oh, we're just talking about.
No, you know what I want to.
Incorporating this into the update.
I just think just communication. So it will be added to the agenda planning process that if someone's not allowed to speak, um, like, if someone who makes a request to speak to an item not on the agenda, then that council will be notified about that.
Looking at the agenda planning process, does it even talk about the email that we send?
No, it doesn't. I know it's administrative. I'm just kidding. Yeah.
I feel like even including the yes and no to speakers is more administrative. Right? Well, it could be an update through that way. I mean, it's just done. I mean, I'm not expecting it to happen on a daily basis or anything, right? Or weekly basis. I mean, I think it'd be very um. You know, extreme, but I just think that it's good if we actually have that communication that's all. Um, but maybe, I don't know, you can figure this out. I think that uh Council of Kai wants to like wait on the decision, so either you can bring it forward as an amendment or do whatever, whatever you think is best of that moment. You had amendment ticket in or movement ticket out. I think those are all the questions I have at this moment. So thank you guys for all your patience. Natalie, you're up next.
Thank you. Yeah, my questions are about agenda planning. So back when we were discussing this by law, like I'm hearing Mr. LaFara's voice in my ear right now, so I don't know what year. Um. Uh, we talked a lot about agenda planning being kind of an imaginary thing, because ultimately the mayor sets the agenda. Um, so I I don't know if you can speak to that, that, I mean, ultimately, from what I understand, that the chair sets the agenda. Am I misunderstanding that?
I think we used to have an agenda planning committee and it was the mayor and the deputy mayor and the city manager. Um, and David's objection to that was all committees should have terms of references.
Wasn't it proper?
Open to the public.
The way that should have been, yes, because it wasn't open to the public. So then we 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 stripped it down to the agenda planning process, which is which is really what it is, that the chair has the authority to set the agenda with um feedback from others, CAO primarily, and then uh other members of council who were attend the meeting. Um, that's the process that's in our reviews.
I like it better than the deputy mayor, because honestly, YouTube show up almost every time. Shelley shows up almost every time. Wes, you're pretty much there, but yeah, there's a big chunk of you that just kind of like to hang out.
I just come when I'm deputy.
Yeah, it it's virtual and um.
And the re- and so it is just, we, it's just um, just to be transparent with the public, so it is just a gathering where everybody, we just set that we slot the agenda items on an agenda and it's clear in the in schedule that there's no discussion of the like substance of the items themselves, just to talk about finding of the agendas and how long things will take and when they should have in and what makes more sense. Yes.
Is that all you needed, Natalie?
Well, yeah, so I I'm I'm just kind of, so so it sounds like that's kind of still the case, is the mayor just kind of does what the mayor wants to do, set the agenda. And there's no process per se, like, it's it's flexible.
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Is that the way it happens in most municipalities?
I think so. Um, there are, I think the other, you know, side of the pendulum is where it's a convened committee. Everybody in a public, maybe it's public, um, and and um. You know, it's more robust, but I think it doesn't need to be that structured in order to accomplish the setting of agenda.
For questions?
So based on this discussion, um, I am recommending that the bylaw as is, um, that that scale recommend to council that it be approved, but from what I've heard, I'm going to make sure that the agenda report that goes to council on April first has some alternatives added to it to potentially take out the change of the vote provision and um schedule a section three point one. If somebody wants to take away the ability to just change the date and time and location, I'll add wording into that, so that someone can make a motion just to do that if they want to. And then um, I'll add in some wording to add in part about if someone's um not granted the right to speak at a council meeting, that all of council will be notified. So I'll make sure that's all at the April one um, agenda report situation.
Put her hand up, I think.
Shelley, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have another comment on the planning of the committees. Perhaps it could be added that just in an election year, it's towards the end of the year, because I'm not sure where you're going to put them, whether it be around Christmas or between Christmas and New Year's, if we're going into December kind of thing, and it'd be hard to, you know, get people in for interviews at that time, pushing it to the end of the year. I know it's because essentially you're planning it for a new council. And secondly, if you could.
Are you talking public committees?
Yeah, it it's mentioned here that it's moving to the end of the year, right? And um, and then in the, if you could also in your planning, split the two, because I understand there's a need for the first bunch, because they're already approved by the province, but the second bunch, I probably, I would probably only vote in favor of like maybe three or four of them. So anyhow, that's my opinion.
Section is this public committee or?
So I think what Council Berman's been referring to is the section under organizational meetings. Talks about um that at the organizational meeting, the members of um council committees are appointed at that meeting. We don't actually do it at the organizing in October. We always do it the, almost the last or second last meeting of the year after the interviews are conducted. So that's just a mistake that we're trying to fix.
I feel like that was referring to the committees that council sits on.
No, that's nominating committee. That's something separate.
Okay.
Um, so we just took that reference out because it's wrong.
Okay.
Um, so I don't think we need to add anything else with respect to that. And then I think what I heard Council Berman's be saying is that the changes that are related to the like MGA required changes should be clearly highlighted so that somebody on April first could just vote for the amending by law to just have those in there um without everything. Okay.
Okay, can I have somebody make a motion to push this forward to council? On the first, I think it's coming. All right, go ahead, Mike.
The standing committee, the whole recommended council, that by law five twenty twenty-five be passed with proposed changes as noted by the committee.
Okay.
Excuse me, mayor, we don't vote on postponing this, not passing the motion here.
Pushing it to the council.
Pass.
Um, but you're not a setting, you know, recommended council, the ball that be passed.
Yeah.
Not with proposed changes. You're gonna bring them as alternate.
Yes.
Yeah.
We haven't voted on the changes and there was a, we're discussed.
Yeah, so, so maybe we should just say that it be passed and that administration prepare um alternative changes for council.
That works like councils, yeah.
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 It's fine. Alternative changes. I wasn't just sending for councils.
Oh, but I, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine.
Of course.
I hold like longer time.
Absolutely, I agree. But we're gonna see you running, sir.
Yeah.
Roll downhill.
Is that okay? You're making this motion, Mike?
Yeah. See.
Okay. All right, oh. Any comments on that, Mike?
Uh, all good debate, good questions.
Love for debate.
Good answers. And uh with support from legal, when we vote on it, uh, we'll have the opportunity to look at the revisions that were proposed by council, so good opportunity.
Anyone else?
Shall I go?
Take all for the vote?
We could do this and then I can be either. What is it? Like in the procedure by law, I could do both.
I'd like to change my.
It's passed. It was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
No, Shelley.
It was unanimous, mayor. I go to the beginning because I didn't get my question, so that's fine.
Do you have another question?
I just didn't agree with it being, why it would be, we'd be saying it's passed when it's not even clear what we're asking.
We can't pass it. Council passes it.
We don't.
It's just a recommendation to council, basically to bring it to council.
To vote.
That's what it is.
But we don't see the changes until that point in time. So we're recommending passing it or decision, shouldn't have been decision or something instead of passing?
Well, we we don't want to presuppose the decision that council will make at the council meeting, um, from an administrative perspective.
Okay, regardless, I'll vote against it.
Passing by majority, that's what my peoples.
Okay.
Hey.
Last one.
All right, last one, the in the building, uh, and where's the supercharger? Some. Are you talking about the Tesla supercharger coming to San Robert Place? We're not playing, San Robert Mall, right?
All right, sorry to say.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm not aware of one coming here, but.
It's a Tesla jumper work for uh Odeos?
No.
Not yet.
And Tesla's gonna change their names pretty soon.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, it's fun. But I can tell you, every time I've had to stop with a supercharger, I end up spending hundreds of dollars at every retailer that's nearby, so. Get to the mall. All right, uh, who's taking this away? You aren't, go ahead, Megan.
Yeah.
Did you want to introduce Megan? Go ahead.
Great, you're good to go. Um, so good afternoon. I'm here with uh Gage Tweedy and uh Trevor Dooley, just to provide a really brief overview, and by brief, I really mean brief. It's only about five slides um to outline the proposed changes for the city's sustainable buildings policy. It's not letting me go forward. There we go. It's odd, okay. Uh, so the original policy, uh, this is original sustainability policy was approved in two thousand seventeen and the direction for this policy and this work came from the local action plan for energy conservation and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which was developed in two thousand and twelve. A review of the policy as part of a regular four years uh review cycle of council policies was initiated in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. Um, however, with the reallocation of priorities due to disruption in staff, the review was delayed until two thousand twenty-four. So when we approached um the review of the policy, we really had some key objectives in mind. Um, the first was to update the policy based on key learnings from the implementation of the standards since two thousand seventeen, including use of current terminology definitions, best management practices in the industry. Furthermore, we wanted to outline uh guidelines to facilitate the development of sustainable buildings, and this is really the primary, primary objective of the policy. Um, and really, we're using this um and considered this lens when we're viewing the policy. Lastly, we wanted to draft a complimentary administrative directive that would include more detailed standards and processes. As such, you'll notice that detailed standards in the original policy were simplified and are removed and will be included in a complimentary administrative directory, directive, sorry. Um, so really, the policy, um, we we're bringing it more from outcome level and provides um some enhanced flexibility moving forward. So the environment branch, we didn't do this alone. We did some internal engagement on the proposed updated policies in October of two thousand twenty-four with staff um from the different areas and departments that you see on the screen here. So these departments and branches were identified based on their role in the implementation of the policy and administration of supporting administrative directive. The po- the proposed policy incorporates feedback from this internal stakeholder review. In addition, the review of the sustainable buildings policy was identified in the EAC two thousand twenty-five work plan as a priority. So at their meeting last month on February twenty-seventh, the committee reviewed the proposed changes and provided feedback and endorsed the updated policy we're reviewing here today. So there were key themes that we heard from our conversations with city staff stakeholders. And again, the the feedback um is incorporated in the version you received today and noted on the remaining slides. So first and foremost, we heard that green third-party certification is difficult to attain for RMR projects. We reviewed the past three to four years of RMR projects and couldn't identify projects that easily received third-party certification. However, the project successfully implemented energy efficiency measures. As a result, the requirement for third-party certification of RMR projects was removed from the policy. Instead, certification, instead of certification, the policy admin directive provides direction on energy efficiency member, measures that should be considered and implemented during the project. Further to that, additional targets uh for RMR projects are included in the administrative directive to provide guidelines for energy efficiency measures. On the other hand, green third-party certification, it's a mouthful, for new city facilities is achievable, and we have been doing this in practice. This has not changed in the original policy and was recommended by our city stakeholders to remain in the policy and in the admin directive. Green third-party certification for unoccupied facilities like utilities infrastructure, so reservoirs, pump stations, is not achievable, and at this time, there isn't a standard that exists for this kind of infrastructure. As a result, utilities buildings was removed from the definition of city building, so that these facilities are exempt from this requirement. Various other suggestions were discussed with city staff and incorporated into the policy. So this includes a demolition project. So where possible is required that the the project reduce the volume of waste directed to the landfill. It would notice that the poli- policy uh should consider buildings that we purchase and add to the facility inventory. So at minimum, we are suggesting that energy assessment be completed on buildings when the city is considering a purchase, so that energy efficiency improvements can be considered and accounted for in the capital budget. Um, this approach is very similar to other municipalities in the region and is considered a best management practice at this time. Accessibility definition was updated to align with the standard the city is using for implementing accessibility features in our facility facilities. We also added uh buildings are designed and operate to enhance climate adaptation, so considering the resilient standards be incorporated. And we also updated the responsibilities to align with the city's current practice for implementation of the policy. So this includes um in environment staff, project managers and public operations staff that were not considered when the original policy was developed. These are currently fall under the CAO and the policy, but will be more specific and detailed in the administrative directive. So this concludes uh the overview of our updates and more available for any questions if council has any.
So. Who has the serious questions? Pardon?
I don't have it.
You don't have any? Mike, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't have anything.
Who's environment, fights or committee? Is that you, Shelley?
Yeah.
Um, is that what are you for the motion? But.
Yes, I can do it. Sure, as soon as that.
How many buildings did we build up? How many buildings did we build under the policy since two thousand seventeen?
I think firehouse hole, the firehouse main one.
Yeah, okay.
Where's, was it, sorry.
Let's go ahead, yeah.
Hey, uh, where's um. I'm assuming this went to the environmental committee, obviously. Did they recommend any changes from what was originally presented to them?
Uh, they did. They recommend some very minor changes, and we've incorporated those in here.
Nothing.
No, nothing or shattering.
Counselor Hughes, the committee did mention that it was, you know, pretty much in line with what, you know, they've been discussing, and it wasn't major changes, just tweaks. They're pretty agreeable much on this one. Are we ready?
I think there is no questions. Well, that was fast. Oh, Wes, oh, Wes, go ahead.
Just clarity. Uh, city buildings shall promote education and reflect the city's brand. What does that mean?
Uh, well, I, I, I think it's very. General statement that is maybe alluding to something like our solar dashboard or, I mean, I don't think we have anybody from communications here. But if we have any branding that we can incorporate in there, yeah, just very general high level statement that alludes to some of those specifics. Right.
I'm not going to argue, I just didn't understand it.
So, um, and if it's in here, it may be in here, but I'm not going to find it in the next three and a half minutes. When you build a building that meets these standards, are we putting somewhere on the exterior of the building that this has been built to these standards? Like a sub, any kind of placard or anything, a statement that says this is a whatever standard building?
It'd be specific to the green certification we get.
Yeah.
I believe that lead buildings do have a plaque that says they're being certified, whether it's like bronze, gold, silver, platinum or whatever. I'm, I can't say about Boma Best Buildings, if they have a plaque on them.
I'm just wondering if they didn't, if we would just provide one, but it's not listed in here. I just do. If we put in all this investment of additional dollars to achieve this goal, you would think that it's somewhere, you would say this is an. I S O two thousand and one certified, or whatever it is. You know, Kathy Hearn certified building, whatever the standard is.
No, just certified.
Just certified, yeah, just, I mean, just somewhere on there that just recognizes that this building has something else somewhere on it. I'm just a suggestion, that that may be something. That we might do, but it's not a standard just saying in this document.
Shelley, you want to make a motion?
Sure. That the standing committee of whole recommended council that the amended council policy, C P and E dash twelve. Sustainable buildings attached to the gender report entitled Sustainable Buildings Policy Review and Update. Date at March eleventh, twenty twenty five be approved.
Any comments on that, Shelley?
Uh, just another comment, like, you know, as far as putting a plaque on the building and such, the goal in the future, of course, is all buildings will be like this, right? And I mean, it's ever changing in the levels of what you need to achieve. That's why the policy has to be somewhat broad. Because there'll be greater expectations probably in the future, but it's a good, solid policy with good intent. And um, and you know, the committee was happy about it.
Perfect. Any other comments for go to vote? Do you not have a call for a vote? That is unanimous. And no emergent items? Is there any I Rs? You noticed, yeah, you just did a notice motion on.
Yeah.
Rec, many, so do you want to read it?
Yeah.
I have to read mine now, I'm in this one.
Yeah. Uh, the project charter to complete the schematic design for the community mendy site for to be determined dollars is approved to be funded by T B D. Uh, serve or debt, so.
Or debt?
Well, I don't know. I'm just like, how much it is? I said, tell me the funding source.
Did you call it a NOM? NOM, can I hear your NOM?
Uh, this was the one I missed last week. It was that, uh, so it's in the system and it's that the twenty twenty five. Base budget be increased by ten thousands, funded through taxes on an ongoing basis for additional planters to be deployed at the Tashi Roundabout downtown. And along North St. Albert Trail.
All right, well, then the planner will schedule that. But at the end of the meeting, so there's no questions. It's always good to go to the end, right? Thanks, guys. Um, and that's it. We are adjourned. Uh, one thirty five. Mike, oh, Shelley's hand is up, sorry.
All right, I just wanted to thank Gage. He's in the room there.
Yeah, he just left Gage.
So I, I missed that. I should have thanked him when he presented. He did a great job with the environmental committee. He's very thorough, so thank you, Gage.
Hold on, he, hold on, he's coming back. He wants to hear this.
Oh, is he?
There he is.
There he is.
And Shelley?
Hi, Gage. I just want to thank you for presenting to the environmental committee. You did a great job and you're always very thorough, so I do appreciate that. So thank you again.
Thanks. Okay, now we are read adjourned. The adjourn, the adjourn. Unadjourned.